Okay, we're gonna reconvene the committee on finance for decision making for yesterday's agenda, uh, 3:30 agenda. Uh, first up is Senate Bill 1419, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendation is to, uh, defect the date to 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, any discussion? Okay, thank you, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on S.B. 1419, S.D. 1, H.D. 1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Grandinetti.
Aye.
Representative Holt. Representative Hasi is excused. Representative Keo Hokapu Leloi. Representative Pizagawa.
Uh, first up is Senate Bill 1419.
Representative Kush.
Oh, Kush?
Yeah, Kush, yes, sorry.
That goes to machine, uh, aye.
Representative Lama Sau.
Aye.
Representative Lee.
Aye.
Representative Miyake.
Aye.
Representative Morikawa. Representative Templo.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Reyes Oda.
Aye.
And Representative Ward is excused. Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 298, S.D. 1, H.D. 1, as is, discussion. Hey, vice chair.
Voting on S.B. 298, S.D. 1, H.D. 1, recommendations to pass unamended. Noting the excused absences of Representatives Hasi and Ward, who will be noted as excused for the remaining of this agenda unless otherwise noted. Are there any members voting with reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 960, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Uh, we're gonna be defecting the date to 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, any discussion? Vice chair.
S.B. 960, S.D. 1, H.D. 1, recommendations to pass unamended, or, sorry, with amendments. Um, any members voting with reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 952, S.D. 2. Uh, defecting the date 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, any discussion? Hey, vice chair.
S.B. 952, S.D. 2, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 30, 304, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Uh, moving, uh, defecting the date to 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, discussion. Vice chair.
S.B. 304, S.D. 1, H.D. 1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 264, S.D. 1, defecting 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, any discussion? Vice chair.
S.B. 264, S.D. 1, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 428. We're gonna be blanking out the increase. Defecting the date 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, any discussion? Vice chair.
S.B. 428, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any knows. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1316, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Uh, 7/1/3000. Technical amendments, discussion. one three thousand. Technical amendments, discussion? Vice Chair.
S B one three one six S D one H D one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, next Senate Bill six six two S D one H D two, same thing, seven one three thousand. Technical amendments, discussion? Please take the vote.
S B six two two S D one H D two, recommendation is to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill four fourteen S D two H D two, as is discussion? Hey, Vice Chair.
S B four one four S D two H D two, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to Senate Bill sixty five S D two H D one, as is discussion? Vice Chair.
S B sixty five S D two H D one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Senate Bill five seventy two S D one H D one, defecting the date to seven one three thousand. Technical amendments, any discussion? Vice Chair.
S B five seven six S D one H D one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to next bill, Senate Bill twelve twenty nine S D two H D one, as is discussion? Vice Chair.
S B one two two nine S D two H D one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill five seventy two S D one H D one, as is discussion? Vice Chair.
S B five seven two S D one H D one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Senate Bill twenty six S D two H D two, as is discussion? Vice Chair.
S B twenty six S D two H D two, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, Senate, moving on to Senate Bill ten zero two S D two H D two, as is discussion? Vice Chair.
S B one zero zero two S D two H D two, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill eight twenty six S D one H D one, as is discussion? Hey, Vice Chair.
S B eight two six S D one H D one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, and last bill on the agenda, Senate Bill nine forty four S D two H D one, as is discussion? Vice Chair for the vote.
S B nine four four S D two H D one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna adjourn this agenda, move on to the next one. We're adjourned. Okay, we're gonna convene our Committee on Finance for today's agenda. Two P M agenda. First up is Senate Bill fifteen seventy one S D two H D two. Vice Chair.
Okay, first we have the Hawaii Tourism Authority with comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Caroline Anderson. I'm the interim President and C E O for the Hawaii Tourism Authority, and we stand on our written comments. I just wanted to also share out our newly elected Board Chair Tadako is also watching this on Zoom. If you have any questions for him, he can answer it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Government Employees Association in opposition. Thank you. We also received testimony from D B A D in support and one individual in opposition. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Hey, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill five eighty three S D two H D one. Vice Chair.
First we have the Department of the Attorney General with comments.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair members. Ian Robertson, Deputy Attorney General. We've submitted testimony, submitting comments expressing concerns that this bill may violate the single subject requirement of Section fourteen, Article three of the State Constitution, and we have suggested deleting some language to avoid that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We have D B A D, the Stadium Authority, in support. Sorry, Department of Budget and Finance with comments.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, Louis Oliveria, Director of Finance. We'll stand on our testimony, providing comments, just cautioning the Committee with regards to the utilization of naming rights, especially for facilities that are financed with tax-exempt bonds. We just wanna make sure that we don't come cross with the I R S when it comes to, again, private activity and private use on government facilities. Thank you Chair. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Tourism Authority with comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Outdoor Circle in opposition on Zoom, Winston Welch.
Yes, aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes. Thank you Chair Yamashita and Finance Committee members. We stand on our written testimony in total opposition to the naming bill rights. This was very similar to last year's bill where the public overwhelmingly unanimously testified against this. There's no oversight rules, lease terms. There's an incumbent loss of cultural and historic identity when we take Hawaiian names and historical place names and slap a corporate label on them. We feel it's a violation of our strong anti-advertising laws that we've had in the state for over a century, as well as, you know, we have a commitment to preservation, not commercialization of these spaces forward. So we would ask that, in fact, you have an opposite bill where we protect native place names, historical sites from corporate branding, maintain the public ownership of this facility over corporate names, and explore alternative funding mechanisms that do not commercialize our cultural and historic places. This is already being done. University of Hawaii does it quite well. I think there's a, this bill seems premature for other ways, but also the concerns of the tax exempt bonds is enough alone to stop this bill today. And we hope that you take our written testimony with all seriousness because we are looking at something like this reversing a hundred years of our very protected and cherished advertising laws. So thank you very much for your time today and consideration.
Thank you. That's all the, that's all the testimony indicating that they'd be here in person. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Please just state your name and position for the record.
Aloha Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support of CARES. I'm just a community advocate, but as a member of the public, I like to be in support of this because it's for a potential funding mechanism beyond the city and the state's funding, and it's not gonna be from the taxpayers' dollars, right? So it's above and beyond the city and the state's funding sources. And so I think this can be very helpful for a private corporate company to do sponsorship for the Aloha Stadium and the Hawaii Convention Center. It helps with lessening the burden of the city and state, and also, so the lease naming rights to stadium facility and the convention center creates the corporate sponsorship where a company pays to have its name on a stadium or the convention center, right? So it allows a company to purchase for exclusive rights, the name to the venue, the building, the event, or the facility in exchange for a fee or other benefits. So utilizing this name rights agreement, it provides the name rights deal of a significant source of revenue for facility owners to help with offsetting the construction costs, player salaries, and other expenses. So let's say for the football team stadium. And also, we can see that in other states it is possible because the Staples Center and as well as the Sports Facilities MetLife Stadium, as well as there are Disney name rights for Disney to purchase the facility space. For example, Disney Marvel Studios acquired the naming rights to Melbourne's Stadium, which was renamed the Marvel Stadium after the superheroes theme. And then Disney has a dedicated licensing department to handle these sorts of requests within Disney's intellectual property rights and including characters and titles of how to use Disney as a corporate sponsorship to lessen the burden for state and city funding sources. So from my understanding of corporate sponsorships, it is possible to help with creating a separate funding source, right, for a funding mechanism to be deposited into the Stadium Development Special Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, members. We also had seventeen other individuals in opposition. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna, yes, oh. Anybody wanna raise their hand? Go ahead.
He can go first.
Hey, Representative Kush.
Thank you. For the Attorney General, just reading your comments, these are your suggested amendments. Do you feel like this tightens it up enough that it remains just with the Stadium Development Special Fund and it doesn't have the ability to like creep to other, it's, you know, it's very specific?
Yeah, these amendments were intended to take the items out of the bill that aren't related to naming rights. So it does maintain the language around the naming rights and the revenue streams from naming rights.
Okay, and do you see anything in here that would preclude if there was a larger private role in developing the stadium? Does this hinder that at all versus a larger public role? I know.
I think it, I think it would depend on what that language looked like. It's a very narrow title, naming rights, so anything that went into this bill would need to be within the scope of naming rights to not create the constitutional concern.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Reyes Oda.
Question to Budget and Finance. Thank you, Mr. Oliveria. According to your written testimony, you wrote that you thought that there may be issues with allowing to lease the naming rights for, for some of the, for these issues relating to the federal tax law with restrictions. Can you tell me about, or tell us about the federal rules or any issues that you thought you were writing about?
So specifically, it pertains to private activity use on facilities that were financed using federally tax-exempt bonds. So there is a prohibition on essentially, again, private activity, basically getting some kind of monetary benefit off of a facility. In this particular case, I'm not, I, if I can be clear, I think the idea of creating and utilizing different forms of revenue streams is a good one, but what we need to be careful of is how these facilities are financed. Like in the case of the stadium, the stadium could be financed using taxable bonds instead of tax-exempt bonds. That would, the prohibition wouldn't apply. But in the case of the convention center, because the convention center has gone and has used tax-exempt bonds, specifically in the ongoing repair and maintenance of that facility, there may be outstanding tax-exempt bonds on that facility that could be problematic.
So in your testimony, you said that, I guess according to what you say, if we did do a violation, what would the, the cost be or an estimate as to remediating any violations?
You know, it's hard to say at this point in time. I mean, general rule of thumb is whatever outstanding bonds are that haven't been defeesed yet and the benefit of that tax exemption, I guess the state could be subject to repaying the federal government.
Thank you.
For the question? Okay, just to be clear, Director, so if it was a new facility and it was using taxable bonds, it'd be fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, members? Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill fourteen ninety one S D one H D one.
First, we have the Department of Taxation in support. Thank you. We have D B A D in support.
Aloha Kaku, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. My name is Thomas Chalk with the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. On behalf of Director James Tokioke, we stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. University of Hawaii System in support.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Committee. I'm Cara Plaman-Wagner, the Director of Institutional Research for the University of Hawaii System. I'm here on behalf of the Office of the Vice President for Academic Strategy to say that we also stand on our written testimony, and I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. We stand on our written testimony and are available for questions.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Kids Can.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. My name is Erica Nakonishi Stanis. I'm here on behalf of Hawaii Kids Can. We would like to submit testimony in support of this measure in recognition of the excellent work that the D X P has produced. We think that expanding partnerships to increase visibility is always a good thing, in particular given the dire need around workforce outcomes that we see. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we also received testimony in support from Hawaii P twenty Partnerships for Education. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill seven forty two S D two H D one.
Okay, first we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations in support.
Good afternoon Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, and members of the Finance Committee. My name is Cindy Ying, and I'm here to testify on behalf of the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations. The Department stands on its written testimony, and I'll be here to answer any questions the Committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Office of Enterprise Technology Services in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Committee. My name is Christine Sakuda, and I am the State Chief Information Officer in the Office of Enterprise Technology Services, which is a division of the Department of Accounting and General Services. And I just wanted to offer some, some additional information to our testimony and strong support that within E T S we have a data task force. And the purpose of that data task force is establish data guidelines, data sharing guidelines. And the bill, S B seven four two, really focuses on establishing a data working group. And the purpose of that working group is to collaborate, you know, the action that's needed to enable the data sharing itself. So it's a, it's a very active working group. We ask for two, two staff members to support the working group. And the activities of working group is a very large working group. We wanna make sure that the efforts are actually coordinated well. We also ask that the sunset date be changed to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven, so it's extended a little bit more time to give the working group time to do the work, and that the report be submitted to the ledge within the same period in the twenty twenty seven legislative session. And so data sharing is critical, as you know, to inform data, inform decision making, having the right data at the right time to make the right decisions. And this working group is really tasked with enabling that to happen. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Executive Office on Early Learning in support.
Hi Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, members of the Committee. I'm Yuko Aricau-Cross, Director of the Executive Office on Early Learning. We stand on our written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. University of Hawaii System with comments.
Good afternoon once again Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee. I'm Cara Plaman-Wagner from the Institutional Research, Analysis, and Planning Office at the University of Hawaii System. I'm here on behalf of the Office of the Vice President for Academic I'm here on behalf of the Office of the Vice President for Academic Strategy to say that we stand on our comments, our written testimony, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. Yasmin Chaney, Executive Director for the Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Kids Can in support.
Hello again, Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair Takanouchi, Members of the Committee. My name is Erica Nakonishi Stanis, Hawaii Kids Can. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure. The value is in the potential for a permanent data sharing structure that we're looking at that goes beyond a single issue, a single moment in time, or a single agency. There are a lot of questions we know to ask right now. Workforce development outcomes in Bill 1491 is a good example of that. But there are also many questions we don't know to ask. Historically, if we look at the impacts of AI, that's a good example of a question maybe we didn't see coming 10 years ago, but that would have benefited from having cross-agency data sharing and a working group of people committed to asking those questions in anticipation, not reflexively, right? This bill's value is seen, I think, most clearly in the number of agencies, offices, and entities that have asked to become a part of it. Usually, people don't want to attend working groups and more meetings. People are asking to be a part of this and that's because they see value in what it is proposing. In light of the federal upheaval and data scrubbing that we're seeing on websites across the government, we are losing data. We are losing access to transparency and data that we need to make good decisions for our state. I think one suggested amendment that we would like to support is ETS's request that the working group sunset in 2027. There's a saying, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together, right? And in order to give the working group the time that it needs to go with everybody to take advantage of best practices in other places and to make sure we understand the status quo here, one year is not enough to do that. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this bill and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Workforce Funders Collaborative in support on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. I'm Matt Stevens with the Hawaii Workforce Funders Collaborative and we stand on our written testimony in strong support of this bill. As a state, we're making major investments in workforce development, but right now, we don't have the data systems in place to be able to measure the long-term outcomes that would tell us which investments are truly leading to better results for students and job seekers. Without this, we limit our ability to refine programs in ways that could strengthen our state's economy. And we cannot build those systems without multi-agency data governance, as others have mentioned. Other states have already solved this problem, though. Five years ago, in a different role, I worked with the Colorado Workforce Development Council on a similar cross-sector data sharing initiative, and I saw firsthand how modernizing workforce data systems could transform our economic planning. By integrating employment and education data, Colorado was able to track which programs led to good jobs, could adjust strategies in real time, could reduce administrative burden, and most importantly, could provide job seekers with real-time information that they needed to make informed career decisions. And as others have mentioned, the data governance apparatus that unlocked all of this was then able to be used for other use cases in public services, public health, and the list goes on and on. The main lesson that I took from that experience is this: successful data sharing requires more than just agents, agreements, or technologies. It really requires dedicated staff whose job it is to sustain collaboration across agencies, because no single department has the capacity to manage that alone. And that's why this working group is so important. It provides the structure and the staffing needed to ensure that data sharing is not just a one-time initiative, but an ongoing strategy that strengthens Hawaii's workforce and economic development over time. I thank you for your consideration of this bill and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's everybody I have checked in. Members, also testimony in support from the Office of the Governor, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Office of Wellness and Resilience, Department of Human Services, Ulupono Initiative, and one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 183, SD1, HD1.
First, we have the Department of Budget and Finance in opposition.
Chair, Vice Chair, the department will stand on its testimony in opposition.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources Development in comments? Thank you. UPW in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kamakana Kamalua, Government Affairs Manager, Feeney Public Workers. You have a written testimony and we'll actually stand on our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. HGEA in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members, Nui Sebastian with HGEA. Well, standard of testimony in strong support, but I do want to emphasize that the current negotiation process for employee-employer contributions to the EUTF lacks a dispute mechanism. So kind of what, you know, we're asking for you folks to consider is allowing us to fairly bargain this negotiable item. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody I have checked in. We also have University of Hawaii Professional Assembly and Hawaii State AFL-CIO in support. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions, members? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next bill, 1359, SD1, HD1.
First, we have the Hawaii Employer Union Health Benefits Trust Fund in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Derek Mizuno, EUTF Administrator. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody who indicated they'd be here with us today. Also, testimony in support from the Oahu District Hawaii State Teacher Association, retired. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions, members? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1360, SD1, HD1.
The Employees Retirement System of the State of Hawaii in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Tom Williams, the Executive Director of the Employees Retirement System. You have our testimony. We see this as an administrative or housekeeping matter. We're attempting to conform the requirements for minimum distributions from our program with those imposed by the Internal Revenue Service. That's important to maintain the fund's tax exemption. We appreciate your consideration of this bill and I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the written testimony we've received. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you. We're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1361, HD1.
We have testimony in support from the Employees Retirement System.
Once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom Williams of the ERS. This bill attempts to separate the dates on which the ERS is required to audit employer compliance with reporting of employer contributions and other personnel data to the ERS from the report to the legislature. Presently, the audit and the report to the legislature are required in the same fiscal year, and this change would allow us to audit in one fiscal year and report to the legislature in the very next one. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we've received for this measure. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 935, SD2, HD2.
We have Department of Budget and Finance with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Louis Salavera, Director of Finance. We will stand on our written comments, but we just wanted to highlight a specific provision in the bill that creates a separate new class for a specific type of employee within the state. We believe that this could have some significant repercussions on the state's unfunded liability going forward. So we have some serious concerns with that portion of the bill and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. EUTF with comments? Thank you. Employees Retirement System with comments?
Chair Yamashita, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom Williams of the Employees Retirement System. The ERS would like to provide comments on both Sections 1 and 2 of this bill. Section 1 of the bill, as we understand it, would provide enhanced retirement benefits for sheriffs and deputy sheriffs. There's a current statute that precludes benefit enhancements until we're fully 100% funded, but you have our written testimony that identifies a number of concerns related to the bill. It's not clear as to the full eligibility, whether or not there would be retroactivity, nor are the contributions that would be required in order to provide funding for enhanced benefits by either the employee or the employer included in this record. And it would potentially adversely impact the ERS's unfunded liability. The second portion of the bill relates to a reduction in the vesting period applicable to entitlement to ERS retirement benefits for Tier 2 employees. Tier 1 employees currently enjoy vesting after five years of service. In 2012, that was changed for Tier 2 to increase it to 10 years of service. We think a change back to five years would strengthen the funding of the program. It would serve to recruit and retain workers in the system and ultimately fund the unfunded liability perhaps more quickly. Tier 2 employees contribute the same as Tier 1 employees, but more of their dollars go to fund our unfunded liability because they actually, while contributing similarly, have dramatically less in terms of benefits or liability. I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We have UPW in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members, again, Kamakana Kamalua, UPW. You have our written testimony. We strongly support Part 2 of this bill. We do believe that decreasing the vesting period for employees could help the employers with recruitment and retention and, more importantly, recruiting past public employees back into service. Happy to answer any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. HGEA in support. Thank you. That's everybody we have checked in. Also, testimony in support from the Office of the Governor, DLIR, HSTA. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1567, SD1, HD1.
First, we have Department of Human Resources Development in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. I'm Brenna Hashimoto, Director of the Department of Human Resources Development. I'll stand on my written testimony in support, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of things for the committee's consideration. DHEARD is strongly supportive of this measure, which would allow us to contract with a vendor to help us review the classification and compensation system for our civil service employees. I think many of us know that many of our classifications are outdated and the minimum qualification requirements need to, need to be refreshed and reviewed. And we simply don't have the manpower within our own department to accomplish this in a timely and efficient manner. So the funds for this project would enable us to do that and so we appreciate your consideration. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We have Holomula Collaborative in support. Thank you. That's all the written testimony we've received. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions, members? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1065, SD2, HD1.
First, we have the Department of Budget and Finance with comments. Thank you. Department of Accounting and General Services in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. On behalf of Comptroller Keith Rigan, I am Dr. Adam Janson. I am the State Archivist and Administrator of the Public Archives. I've been asked to testify on this, in our support of this bill, because I have a rather unique perspective. 20 years as a hiring professional, as well as teaching graduate programs both locally, on the continent, and internationally. So I have a very unique perspective of the difference between academic knowledge and work knowledge. And while it is true that technically a degree is not required, if you read the wording on how do you make that determination of work experience being the equivalency of four years of degree-seeking undergraduate? How do you quantify that? It is so obliquely written that nobody knows what qualifies and what doesn't. And let's be honest, I spent 20 years in college. I'm a slow learner. During my undergraduate, I took social dance, judo, two semesters of welding. Should that qualify for a professional position? Yet, we're cheating that as the bar. It should be the other way around. Work experience and then degree coursework in that field should count, not social dance. Why am I getting credit for that? So thank you for the opportunity to share my manao. I am always happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Department of Human Resources Development with comments.
Well, again, Brenna Hashimoto, I just wanted to, from DHEARD, I just wanted to point out that of the executive branches, 1,458 civil service classes of work, none of them require a bachelor's degree as an absolute requirement unless it's required by law. All of our civil service classifications provide a substitution of professional experience for a degree requirement, with the exception of things like nurses, social workers, architects, engineers, where there's a legal requirement for, for having a degree. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We have the State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair, Committee Venerance, Dan Schipartolz, Executive Director for the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. We stand in strong support of this measure. For us, lived experiences matter. So a parent of a child with a disability, our family member, that experience really has a lot of value and it adds to our team when we hire somebody with that. So it's not always the degree. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's everybody I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii and three individuals. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna take a stab at this.
Okay, Representative Kush.
Louis from Budget and Finance, please.
Good afternoon, Representative. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So looking at this, would, and I understand the state's predicament, there is a lot of positions that are, I know in Ag, we heard a lot from the Department of Ag about like pesticide use being a college degree position, but really more like work in the field might be also really applicable. You, of course, you're in finance and budgeting and accounting, you're attracting those kind of graduates. Would something like this preclude you from creating a preferential? Like, let's say, I came to you from Joe's Accounting Service and I had 10 years versus, you know, next person who had a college degree in accounting? Would it give you options or like, or tie your hands?
I guess the way that we read the bill, and I know that there are provisions in the bill that allow for the appointing authority to make the determination on whether or not a bachelor's degree would be required for it. That being said, sometimes the application of the law may not necessarily be very clearly articulated, but I think especially in the field that I deal with, you know, primarily when you're talking about, say, for example, economic theory on some of the things that we're doing with, I mean, and no offense to anybody, I would like the person that's working for me to probably have learned that from somebody who has a PhD, for example.
Not TikTok?
Not TikTok, yes. So, so I think that, you know, again, it's maybe it's not clearly defined within the provisions of how this law is written, but I caution the committee in terms of how the bill is written, it could potentially, you know, cause some challenges in probably some of the other departments like mine, for example.
Okay, so it could tie your hands.
It could tie my hands, yeah.
Is there any amendments that you would see? I'm sorry, Chair. Stop me.
I think, and this is not my forte per se, but I think from the standpoint of, you know, specific credit requirements, or if you, if, say, for example, we're looking for an individual that received a bachelor's degree that had, you know, or, you know, we wanted to see, you know, some type of formal education around, you know, specific accounting principles, or, for example, like generally accepted accounting principles. You know, getting that education, say, for example, at an institution, you know, kind of lends to the idea that maybe, you know, the individual that's teaching it has, knows what they're doing.
Sure, sure. So, as I understand what you're saying, though, with this bill, you would take away your ability to ask for a college education in a position?
I'm not clear on how the bill written. It does say that the appointing authority has the discretion to do that, so, you know, I can touch base with, you know, with our DHEARD department on whether or not, you know, we can make that determination at the departmental level.
Okay. Thank you. That's just my concern, is just, you know, wanted to open and not, you know, tie hands.
Sure, sure.
So, thank you for your input. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Further questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 447, HD1.
We have the Department of Human Resources Development in opposition.
Aloha, Brenna Hashimoto, Director of DHEARD. I, we submitted written testimony in opposition to this measure, and I'll just highlight the basis for our opposition. First and foremost, I would like to say that DHEARD fully supports streamlining hiring efforts within the state executive branch. We've taken on a number of initiatives in the last year which demonstrate our willingness to work with departments to speed up hiring and to minimize delays. However, this particular measure violates the state constitution and Chapter 76 when it comes to civil service merit principles. And specifically, it undermines our equal pay for equal work provisions, as well as our equal employment opportunity provisions. And it provides the Department of Health the ability to pay whatever they want, to hire whomever they want, without, by circumventing the civil service merit principles. And for those reasons, we object to this measure. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We have State Health Planning and Development Agency in support. Dr. Lewin.
Add on my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. HDEA in support.
Chair, what can I say?
Thank you. In support on Zoom, we have Caesar Santiago.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. I'm Cesare Santiago, and speaking on behalf of myself, I am in support of this bill as written in my testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. That's all the written testimony we've received on this measure. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 479, SD1.
We have the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities in support.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Chair, Committee Members. Danae Bartolos, Executive Director for the Hawaii State Council on Development to Disabilities. We stand in strong support of this measure, especially now that Medicaid is kind of, we're kind of concerned about the funding for Medicaid. This will help us educate people on able accounts, how you could save money over $2,000, up to $100,000 without affecting your benefits. We have over 100,000 individuals that are eligible for Hawaii able that they could apply for here in Hawaii, and we have less than, oh, a little over 200, just because for decades we've been telling people not to do this. And don't put your information online, and able accounts are only online. So that's something we want to educate people. By giving us a staff, we could educate departments and other individuals on how to do this so we could promote able and get people to be more independent. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Apologies. Also, Department of Budget and Finance in support. That's everybody I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from Councilmember Bulisan from Kauai County Council, Easter Seals Hawaii, Hawaii Self-Advocacy Advisory Council, Work Now Hawaii, Hawaii Disability Rights Center, and about 16 individuals. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Please state your name and position for the record.
Angela Melody Young testifying in strong support of the measure to equip those with disabilities and for those who are debilitated from making functional decisions to equip the marginalized and very vulnerable population with the tools to achieve financial empowerment and help to prepare for a secure future through this very simple and intuitive online savings opportunity. So, I think that if the repeal of the statutory language to, I think, cross out the Budget Director is necessary as the bill is being proposed, then shouldn't there be someone else to advise, for example, the Attorney General? I'm not sure, though, because I'm just a community advocate and a member of the public. But I think, as I've read and have participated in a few of the discussions at the City Council and the Hawaii State Capitol, is that the Attorney General has a broad supervisory authority over charitable purposes, including trusts, foundations, and also nonprofit corporations. And so, for example, the Attorney General can initiate litigation or intervene in existing litigation concerning charitable trusts to enforce a trust's terms. And although what we're talking about within this bill is not a nonprofit trust, it is a trust within the state's funding structure, it can be comparable to what the Attorney General represents in terms of public interests and also trust funds. So, the Attorney General can ensure the actions of fiduciary duties to such disability populations. So, from my understanding and the reading of the bill, if there's going to be someone not going to be included, then shouldn't they include someone else, right? Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Chair, Vice Chair, James Labrie and Raymond Mameya.
Okay, please, go ahead.
Aloha, Vice Chair, and members of the Committee. My name is James Labrie, and I will stand on my written testimony for SB 479, SD1, and I'll be available for any questions. Thank you for this opportunity to testify on this very important bill.
And Raymond Mameya, Chair, Vice Chair.
Okay, please, go ahead.
I'm Chair, Vice Chair, and I strongly support the SB 479, SD1, and any chair able saving the town because it's important for anyone with developmental disability to have their own pay in the account so they can have money and they can spend it on however they want to. Thank you for this testimony.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, Members, questions? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1281, SD2, HD1.
Do we have the Department of Human Services in support on Zoom?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Judith Moore Peterson, on behalf of the Department of Human Services, we stand on our written testimony and in support of this bill. Thank you, and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHIPTO, in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, we certainly support this bill. And a lot will depend in terms of federal funding.
Oh, Dr. Lewin, sorry. If you're going to make additional comments, can you speak into the mic? Thank you.
There are some uncertainties in federal funding that, you know, make the future completely unclear, but we will need telehealth and telemedicine for, to address our workforce shortage and to really reach out and try to expand primary care access for people. So this bill is very important. It might need a sunset date on it if we want to look and see what happens in terms of the federal funding and other sources of funding, but it is an important measure for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Association of Health Plans in support. HMSA in support. Thank you. Do we have the Hawaii Mental Health Coalition in support on Zoom?
Aloha, I'm Melissa Pavlasek. I'm testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Mental Health Coalition, the Hawaii Psychological Association, the National Association of Social Workers, the Hawaiian Islands Association for Marriage and Family Therapy, and Hawaii Counselors Association. We strongly support this measure. We actually support lifting the sunset on the audio-only telehealth altogether, but this bill will allow us to move forward, and please support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's everybody I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from the Department of Health, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, University of Hawaii Systems, State Council on Mental Health, nine other organizations, and one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, aloha. This is Michelle Chrissy Kohine.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Chrissy Kohine. I'm the Director of Tech Equity at Wanaiko's Comprehensive Health Center. I am submitting oral testimony today, and I would like to acknowledge that I also submitted written testimony, albeit slightly late, so I just wanted to ensure the committee had both forms of our support with comments for SB 1281. So as FQHC serving vulnerable and underserved populations, we strongly support this bill as telehealth, as Dr. Lewin had mentioned, is critical for our communities, and for some, it is definitely a lifeline. We also want to make sure that audio-only services are made available, as many of our patients who are low-income, kapuna, and sheltered, and are experiencing and/or experiencing reliable broadband connectivity really rely on audio-only telehealth for their care, for the barriers that I just mentioned, including digital literacy. So telehealth addresses transportation and mobility barriers. I think we realize the benefits over this COVID-19 pandemic. And then, again, it really has been a lifeline for mental health, as well as primary care services. In addition, we support making audio-only telehealth permanently available for all patients, and also supporting extending Act 107 as it pertains to Chapter 346 HRS to ensure that audio-only telehealth remains reimbursable and therefore accessed and utilized as a vital tool in improving access to health care. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, questions, Members? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1448, SD2, HD2, OHD1.
We have the Department of Accounting and General Services in support. And Department of Health in support.
Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Also, that's everyone who has checked in. Also, testimony in support from the State Council on Mental Health. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, Representative Namasaw.
For digs. So I see in your testimony that you need to make some changes as far as your request for this bill. So that's construction and also legal fees? Is that correct?
Could you repeat that last part again, please?
Is that construction and legal fees?
That is correct, yes, thank you.
So, I think, can I have a follow-up, Chair?
Yep, please.
Going forward, you know, when it comes to providing our contractors a bunch list of things, like whose responsibility is it to make sure that they had made appropriate, I guess, changes and things that, so we wouldn't be in this position right now?
I see, okay. Through construction, we do construction management. This was a design-build project, which is a little bit different from our usual design-bid builder, low-bid projects, okay? And so, the design builder also provided internal construction management of their own activities, and we oversaw their construction management through our devices. And so, through that, that's the mechanism for getting them to make corrections and so forth during construction. After construction, then we bring in our internal expertise on warranty management, and as we were doing that, then we uncovered these sort of construction defects that had gone undetected during construction.
Oh, is it your responsibility, or is it the contractor's responsibility to make sure that, who declares it's a defect?
Okay, for a design-build project, that is primarily the responsibility of the design builder, okay? And that's one of the beauties of design-build, you have a single point of responsibility. As I say, we had oversight on their construction management to try to assure that their construction management was of high quality. Obviously, there were some issues with that.
Thanks, Gordon, for being here. Been barking over this bone for a little bit, for, when I read your comment, it's $10 million, eight for repair and maintenance, but $2 million in legal fees.
Actually, let me clarify, okay?
Thanks.
We have $2 million for legal fees. We initially came in with 6.6 that would take care of remediation of mold and repairs to prevent mold from reoccurring, okay? As the legislative session wore on, we realized that we would need another $100,000 to install ultraviolet lighting in the air conditioning ducts to prevent the recurrence of mold. We had a separate proposal for a CIP bill that would include a $2.4 million comprehensive study of the facility so that we could uncover as many as possible of the construction defects that occur there. When that CIP bill appeared not to be going forward, we thought that it would be critical to move that $2.4 million into this emergency appropriation because that study will be really necessary to assure that as we move forward on trying to repair this building and correct the construction defects, that we have the proper information in hand.
Yeah. Thanks for that clarification. I think my large concern is, just in the course of the last month, we still really haven't gotten our arms around that dollar amount to make the repairs. And there's no assurances that the dollar amount in any appropriation actually makes the repairs.
Okay, I understand your concern, okay? Part of this $2.4 million comprehensive study is to help us to get our arms around that. There is, in HB 300- is to help us to get our arms around that. There is, in HB 300, HD1, there was a portion there, 29 million set aside. In fact, we believe that we, at this point, only need, I think it's 26.4 million out of that, to address the things that we know of now, okay? As we conduct this comprehensive study, we may come up with other things, but part of that study is not just discovering new defects, but also discovering how to address the defects that we know are there now.
Yeah, and I think, building off of my colleague's point, right, where the checks and balances were, we wouldn't be making such a huge emergency appropriation had the checks during the inspection process occur. And we've heard in other committees, right, through this design-build process, there was a set of plans, but those plans were altered because that's a process that's allowed through design-build. And then back to the inspection process where we could have caught these defects prior to the inspection approval. And I think rocks and hard places is where we're at right now. We're trying to get something fixed. You need a comprehensive study, but we also are approving legal fees and costs, and we don't know where the recuperation for any of this is going to come because we're still trying to work nicely with the contractor and the project manager and the third-party review. Gordon, maybe you don't have an answer?
I understand what you're getting at. We are continuing to try to work with the design builder to get them to resolve as many of these defects as they are willing to do. We realize that there are a number that they are simply unwilling to address also, okay? And those, we're being a little less friendly. The reason for the $2 million and the allowance for the legal fees is so that we can move forward and recover the state's costs as we correct these deficiencies so that we can recover them from the design builder.
Okay. Yeah, rocks and hard places. It would be great to have an after-action report, especially as we go through the spend-down of the emergency appropriation. We have heard for the course of the last month, the federal administration is making it very tough for us to make very challenging decisions for safety net programs for the state.
Yes.
And now we have this huge hiccup, I want to call it something else, but a huge hiccup that we're going to have to backfill so that we can get the safety net of a hospital up and running while other programs and other agencies stand in wait while the rug is being pulled out from under them. Please help us with that. As a committee member, I would urge, you know, the Chair to get an after-action report on the spend-down, what kind of progress we're making, along with whatever, whatever checks and balances we can provide in this process so that if there's another ask, which I strongly feel in my gut is going to come, if not this biennium, the next biennium, so that we can have a real, honest conversation about how we don't have to do this again.
Yeah, thank you, Representative.
Chair.
I will assure you that we are working very diligently on trying to resolve this in a way that hits the best value for the state of Hawaii.
Thank you, and get those legal fees back. Chair, thanks for the latitude on this one. I yield.
Thank you very much. Any further questions, members? You know, because this is an emergency appropriation, and the members have a lot of concerns, could you, like, maybe, you know, you're asking for $10.66 million in the EA. Okay, so you need 2.4 for the study. You need $2 million for this legal fees. What else? How else does it break out?
The other 6.16 is for mold remediation, and that includes going into the air conditioning ducts and so forth. And then also repairs of some of the defects that we know are contributing to the occurrence of mold, water intrusions and things of this nature.
And then you're asking for all this to be in cash, correct?
That is correct, yes. This is an operating request.
Okay. All right. Yeah, at this point, we'll just keep moving it forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next bill, members. Any, well, any further questions, members?
Sorry, just back for DAGs. So, and maybe I always missed it with my colleagues across the way, but is there, do you feel bullish on recovering a lot of these monies?
As I say, we are continuing to work with the design builder to see what they will do on their own. We are also working with our attorneys to assure that we have a sound legal basis going forward. That's about as much as I can say at this point.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1422, SD1, HD1.
We have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Lauren Kim, I'm the Planning and Policy Officer for the Department of Health, and the department stands in strong support of this administration bill. Very quickly, this repeals a special fund, the birth defect special fund, that the Office of the Auditor determined to not meet the criteria. Our proposal is to take the monies that would be deposited into that fund and put it into the Vital Statistics Improvement Special Fund. Another area of the bill, as well as diverting from the general fund, it also would redirect deposits from marriage license fees from that birth defect special fund to the Vital Statistics Improvement Special Fund. And access to those resources is extremely important to the Department of Health. It would supplement future base budget requests as we try to keep up with costs. For example, postage just went up five cents. There are approximately 120,000 vital records requests every year. And just to sort of give you a sense of what this gets at, so this is a special security paper that all birth, death, and marriage certificates are printed on. They cost anywhere from four cents to six cents, depending on how much you buy. To get the four-cent deal, you have to buy, you know, something like $50,000, and half of that is shipping. You know, half of the money we spend to ship reams of this paper here is shipping. So in addition to postage going up, everything is going up. Requests for vital records are going up. So just keeping up with costs, cost of toner, cost of printers, is something that we desperately would like the flexibility of these additional revenues for. More long-term projects, hold up a book. So the day-to-day stuff, you know, we can always improve what we do. It's a terribly manual, it's entirely manual process. During the pandemic, I was the acting state registrar. I got to see firsthand. People print something out from a printer here, walk it over to a sealer over there, fold it, stick it in an envelope. They're all done that way. And there is active planning to modernize our vital record system, with the thanks of this, of previous legislatures appropriating funding money. But some of the other issues, long-term issues, that we are actively planning for but have not identified a revenue source to pay, is, we have a vault of books that go back to the kingdom. Some books, for example, I picked up the Birth and Death Registry for the Island of Molokai during the last king's reign. And on one side of the book, it says Haoli. On the other side, it says Ma'ke, and it's in beautifully written calligraphy, handwritten, man and woman's name, man is Hawaiian Chinese, woman is Hawaiian. That was the vital record back then. And we have books like this. This is a 150-year-old book that you can see is kind of falling apart, and we need expertise to come and help us figure out how we preserve them. Another real treasure is a certificate of Hawaiian birth. This is onion-skinned paper. We have filing cabinets of these, tens of thousands. When Hawaii went from a kingdom to a territory, its residents were authorized to become U.S. citizens, so people had to prove that you were born in Hawaii, which would grandfather you in. If you're born elsewhere, there was another process for that. So to do that, and it was really neat, because I found my own dad's oldest brother's records from Big Island side. They would send government employees from the Secretary of Hawaii and interview your family and all the people you knew that could prove you were born in Hawaii. So on my own dad's oldest brothers, it was the next-door neighbor, "Oh, do you remember Mrs. Kim being pregnant?" "Yeah." "Well, how do you know her?" "Well, because all the Koreans on the east side of Hawaii were in the sewing machine parts business." So we all knew each other, and they had a baby luau on this day. Wonderful treasure. And it is, the next hurricane, you know, it's a flat plain flood zone, our records are on the first floor. All this stuff goes away, and our basement is full of books. This committee is welcome to a tour of the vital records vaults. You can see President Obama's birth certificate. Well, I can show you the envelope, which is in a vault, in a lockbox, in a vault, in a safe, in a vault. Can't show you the actual certificate. But this is part of the modernization of the vital records office that is sorely, sorely needed. Again, previous legislatures have given us planning money, and we have a short list of vendors, software vendors, who we think can do the job for us. We're making incremental changes. We really need to step up our customer service. Your constituents may have contacted you in the past for birth certificates that took a year. Call me if you need something expedited. But, yeah, I mean, these are just invaluable treasures for Hawaii's cultural history. And I'm not saying that they're under threat, but we are actively thinking about how we preserve them, how we digitize them. Usually, well, I won't say usually, sometimes a state agency will come and say, "We got to solve this problem. Give us the money. We'll figure it out." Well, this is so important, we're figuring it out now, and then we're looking for a source of revenues to come with our plan. So, again, the general fund does take a $650,000 hit a year. We hope you won't miss it. But it would come back to our vital record special fund, which is a special fund that has been found every time to meet the criteria of a special fund by the Office of the Auditor. And it's just paying ourselves, replenishing our operational supplies. The last comment I'll make is, I mentioned that marriage license fees, a cut of that went to the birth defect special fund. Currently, unless this bill is passed or enacted, the Department of Health doesn't get any revenue back. Of the $60, the general fund gets about 40, and the balance is split among three special funds. We do all the work. It's all our staff. We pay for the postage. We swear them in. We use our own equipment. So it'd be nice for the agency that does all the work to get a little bit back, and so that we can pour it back into customer service and quality improvement, continuous quality improvement. So I hope you look favorably on this. Again, it does take away 650K from the general fund, but it will be put to good use, and constituents will notice the difference once we set up all of these continuous quality improvement projects. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We also received testimony in support from Ko'olau Foundation. That's all the written testimony we received. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay. I've been on that tour, so. We'll move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1365,
First, we have the State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHIPTO, in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members. This is an important oversight that we have as a state. We have this interstate compact that allows, facilitates us bringing physicians here. We need them. We want to recruit doctors from other states to Hawaii. But presumably, in their other state, when they got their license, somebody did their background check. But when they get here, we currently didn't have this particular responsibility clearly outlined, that we have to do the background check here. That's just a simple thing, but we need to do it to protect the quality of care, and we'd love to see you move this along. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Hawaii Medical Board in support. Thank you. HMSA in support. Thank you. The Queen's Health System in support on Zoom.
Aloha, Vice Chair, Chair, members of the committee. J.C. Mike, you're on behalf of Queen's Health Systems. Just wanted to stand on our testimony, but say mahalo to the ledge for passing this compact back in 2023, and also mahalo to the Department for actually implementing. And we really support this measure moving forward so the compact can be fully functioning for our state. Mahalo.
Thank you. That's everybody who I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from Healthcare Association of Hawaii, Hawaii Pacific Health, Kaiser Permanente, and one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions, members? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1443, SD1, HD1.
We have the Department of Health in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. My name is Mark Lynn Scott. I'm the Hawaii State Hospital Administrator. This is really important. As you may know, most of our patients would qualify for Medicaid if they were on the outside. And so this is kind of parody in terms of getting reimbursement from the state at those Medicare rates. The other part of this bill is to make sure that we get our patients who are long-term skilled nursing into the right environment, which is not necessarily at the state hospital because these folks are really in need of long-term care or skilled nursing. So it allows the department director to be able to set those rates so our patients have a chance of getting to the right level of care. Mahalo for your consideration, and available for questions.
Thank you. Also, testimony in support from the State Council on Mental Health. That's all the written testimony we've received. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions? Okay, next, Senate Bill 1441, SD2, HD1.
First, we have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Mary Ann Suji for the Department of Health. We strongly support this bill and only ask that the committee consider putting a valid effective date of having it effective upon signature. Thank you.
Thank you. Testimony in support from the Hawaii Health Systems Corporation. Thank you. That's everybody I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from Oahu Region of HHSC, and comments from the University of Hawaii SSO, sorry, Oahu Region on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Shanshina, on behalf of the Oahu Region, will stand on written testimony in support, and would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And University of Hawaii System with comments. That's all the written testimony we've received. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions?
I have a quick question.
Okay, Vice Chair.
Hi, Shanshina, with Oahu Region, please.
Hi, Vice Chair.
Hi. So in the testimony, you know, it outlines all of the things that, you know, that I think you guys are pointing out about using all the spaces that were kind of being in question for the originating bill for this, before we had to do this repeal. I just want to make sure that even when we do the repeal, you know, Oahu Region is still going to, you know, work on a comprehensive plan for what we're doing both, you know, at Leahi and Maluhia. I think earlier, we discussed during the info briefings, I think it was mentioned that you guys are redoing your long-term plan. Is that still correct?
That is correct. We have a project with the University of Hawaii Community Design Center. We've already kicked off the project. They're doing assessments. They're looking at height restrictions, easements, just general infrastructure analyses to determine, you know, how we can further develop the Leahi campus to make it more usable either for revenue generation or for more public benefit. And to answer your question, it is our intent, you know, from the get-go, we are the stewards of the Leahi Hospital Campus, which only a portion of which is used for long-term care. So we know that we have an obligation to the public to utilize the spaces appropriately. And so this project will go hand-in-hand with our, you know, long-term goals to work with all departments in need. It's not just the Department of Health. And as you're aware, one of our projects is with the City and County of Honolulu, with the North Shore Mental Health Center.
Sorry, I thought the plan was going to be for Oahu, is the work's only being done for Leahi Campus. I thought there was going to be an update on, like, the Oahu Region plan. So for everything... So for everything that you guys are doing? No?
So the UH CDC plan, or I guess that project deals with just Leahi Hospital Campus because that has the usable space, or potentially usable space. At Maluhia, we only have half of a floor that is already suitable for long-term care operations, or something that might possibly be situated without affecting our license. So for long-term plans for Maluhia, it would be limited to long-term care, because the facility is way smaller than the Leahi Campus.
Okay, sorry, I thought we had, okay, there wasn't like another, like, you know, just Oahu Region plan? I think, you know, we talked, and then it kind of got disrupted with COVID. That was also just for Leahi?
Infrastructure-wise, it's just for Leahi, because the Maluhia Campus is very limited in available space. But project, or I guess programming, that is part of our general strategic plan, which we are trying to update at this time. And there was a delay during COVID, but whatever we can use the space for, when space becomes available, we would do so at both Maluhia and Leahi. It's just that at Maluhia, the only available space would be that half floor currently suitable for long-term care.
Okay, sorry, I think I missed, so the strategic plan is also being updated?
Yes, so we're correct. We're updating our strategic plan, which impacts the entire region. But, and that, I guess that would be the overall umbrella. And underneath that umbrella, you have the program or the project with the UH CDC to revamp the Leahi Campus, to make more usable space, as most of our space right now is currently occupied. But on the Maluhia side, it'd be more dealing with programming and how we can, I mean, if we're going to shift residents around, if that becomes a viable possibility, how we could do so, you know, with a greater impact and greater efficiency.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Okay, moving on to Senate Bill 1431, SD1-HD1.
Okay, first, we have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Tim McCormick with the Communicable Disease and Public Health Nursing Division of the Department of Health. The department strongly supports this measure. You have our written testimony, but I just wanted to emphasize that hepatitis B and C are winnable battles with available testing technologies, immunization for hepatitis B, treatment for hepatitis B, and highly effective curative treatment for hepatitis C that works in as little as eight weeks, along with the community partnerships that Department of Health has developed. This measure, which would create and fund a hepatitis prevention program, could have a tremendous impact addressing these really critical diseases. I'm available for any questions. Thank you for hearing this measure.
Thank you. We have Hep Free Hawaii in support.
Hello, Chair Yomashita, Vice Chair Taki Nuchi, members of the committee. My name is Aaron Riddick. I'm testifying on behalf of Hep Free Hawaii. Hep Free Hawaii is a coalition of over 100 organizations united to eliminate viral hepatitis in Hawaii. Nay, we strongly support SB 1431. CDC considers viral hepatitis a winnable battle. Hawaii already has a hepatitis elimination strategy that's laid out in the Hep Free 2030 Plan. What is needed is funding to support this elimination plan. SB 1431 seeks funding to establish a hepatitis prevention and education program within the Department of Health. There is currently zero state funding for viral hepatitis elimination in Hawaii. Hepatitis elimination is an achievable goal if we have the funding and resources that are requested in SB 1431. I'm the Hepatitis Care Coordinator at Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. I focus on testing, diagnosis, and treatment of hepatitis C, that C as in Charlie. Hepatitis C is curable in as little as eight weeks with an oral medication only. The medication is highly effective with little to no side effects. Hepatitis C treatment is very uncomplicated, saves lives, and saves the state money. Hepatitis C treatment not only saves lives, it changes lives. Individuals that are cured of hepatitis C are much more likely to become invested in their own health, mental health, and also other social services that improve their lives. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I'm here for any questions. We hope that you pass this measure.
Thank you. That's everybody we have checked in. Also, testimony in support from Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, and Aloha Care, as well as about 18 individuals. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, moving on to the final bill on this. Hold on.
Sorry, Dr. Lynn, did we miss you?
I, yes, Chair, Vice Chair, I think my testimony didn't make it, but we should stand strong support.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further testifiers? Okay, any questions? Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1434, SD1-HD1.
First, we have the Department of Health in support.
Aloha, Chair and Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Ron Bala Haria. I'm the Immunization Branch Chief at the Department of Health. The Department of Health strongly supports SB 1434. You have our written testimony. I'm just going to provide some highlights on this that the department wants to focus on. This is a program to reduce barriers to access vaccines for those who choose to receive them. It is expected to reduce costs for healthcare providers and health plans. The intent is to make available to healthcare providers a range of vaccines that are available for discounted purchasing, as currently occurs in the Vaccines for Children Program. We only need right now a one-time support startup fund for $99,340,000. Then the program becomes self-sustaining through the rate assessment process. And so the following program, the funds are going to be used for the first year to build out the infrastructure and staffing for the program, and will not be used for immunization purchases. And the following program startup fees collected from assessed plans will pay for all subsequent program costs, including administrative costs and immunization purchases. Thank you so much for this opportunity to provide testimony, and here to answer any questions if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have State Health Planning and Development Agency, SHIPTA, in support.
Aloha, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Jack Lewin, again, Administrator of SHIPTA. We are in strong support of this. It really helps physicians' practices and rural clinics and others to promote vaccination. Otherwise, these providers go at risk for the purchase of vaccine, and it's difficult for them. And if there's leftover vaccine, sometimes they can't recoup the money. This just facilitates making access available, and we strongly support the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Demachika from Tax Foundation. We have no disagreement with the proposition that vaccines are a good thing. We do have concerns about, number one, the special fund, and number two, the means of getting money into it. We think that the bill should be looked at as imposing a new tax, because that's what it does. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have the Hawaiian Islands Republican Women in opposition.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Hawaiian Islands Republican Women stand in strong opposition to SB 1434. You have my written testimony, and we stand on that. I want to highlight a number of points. This bill talks about funding universal immunization purchase program. As the Hawaii Tax Foundation just testified, SB 1434 imposes a new charge on assessed entities, right? Assessed entities could be insurers, namely these health insurers and health plans, to fund a program to make bulk purchases of vaccines. So this places a burden on the taxpayers in the sense that it is using the special funds, and we all know, based on history, that the special fund sometimes does not come with full accountability. And I want to thank Ke'ohu Kapu Leloi earlier for her passion for fiscal responsibility and stewardship, and that's really what we're talking about here. I'd also like to mention a couple of highlights, that this bill runs under the assumption that the general public, parents and parents of children, are for this. And the decision for vaccinations, immunizations, is a decision between parents and the physicians, patients and the physicians. I have served in healthcare for over 33 years as a licensed social worker and a healthcare administrator. We must not forget informed consent. So I believe this is government overreach and fiscal irresponsibility. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Do we have the Hawaii Chapter of American Academy of Pediatrics on Zoom in support?
Yes, good afternoon. Sorry, my dog decided to bark right at this moment. My name is Maya Maxim. I am co-chair of the Advocacy Committee for the Hawaii Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members, we did submit written testimony, but I would like to just take a moment to talk a little bit about the cost of vaccine-preventable diseases. So I think we all agree that having a devastating disease is a really terrible thing. I work in a hospital, I see children whose lives and their families' lives are upended by devastating diseases, unfortunately on a too-frequent basis. But what, you know, this is the Finance Committee, and I want to give you a little sense of what the cost is of a vaccine versus the cost of a lifelong consequence of a vaccine-preventable disease. If we're talking about this, and, you know, several people have just said that they are looking at it as a new tax, let's talk about the cost to taxpayers of having a patient with lifelong preventable disability. For example, severe disability as a result of measles, which is certainly possible, and I expect that we're going to be seeing that in the outbreak that's currently ongoing on the continent and is likely to come here within the next few months. I take care of patients who have frequent hospitalizations, who have frequent pneumonias, who have seizures. These are not all related to vaccine-preventable diseases, but I'm talking about when you have complex chronic medical conditions. Most of those patients are covered by Quest, and so that is paid for by the taxpayer. They deserve the same quality of care as everybody else. But if you have the opportunity to prevent it with something that costs cents on the dollar, such as a vaccine, and the state is looking at potential funding cuts coming from the federal government, I think it makes absolutely no sense to not take the opportunity to increase access to vaccines for those who choose to vaccinate, and increase the risk of us having more patients with complex chronic, potentially lifelong disease as a result of vaccine-preventable infections. That then puts a much greater burden financially on the system than the cost of a vaccine, especially at the discounted rate, would do. So I wanted to really emphasize that point. From a financial standpoint, it absolutely makes sense to make this small investment right now in order to create a self-sustaining program that can ultimately save the state a significant amount of money. I'd be happy to take any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Libertarian Party of Hawaii in opposition on Zoom. Not present. We have Michael Oldair in support.
Hello, members of this community. In my written testimony, I've already outlined the importance of this bill, and why it should be passed. So I won't go over how vaccines don't cause autism. Even if they did, there's nothing wrong with autism. How the amount of children dying pre-vaccines was so great, that the average lifespan was 40 years, not because people only drop dead after a couple decades, but just by the sheer amount of dead children. But instead, I'll testify on why healthcare is already an enormous burden in Hawaii, not because of the expense, but the distrust of insurance companies, how many people in Hawaii are distrustful of getting free vaccines through their insurance, because they're often worried about hidden back fees. But this bill would remove that hesitancy, and it will also protect the Kakeke and Kupuna, who are the most, who are among the most vulnerable for non-vaccinated complications, and will, sorry. And this will also would protect our native Hawaiian community, who are, who are, have some of the weakest immune systems in the state. We observed this in COVID-19, with native Hawaiians getting hospitalized 10 times higher than other demographics. By supporting this bill, we would be supporting our state's most vulnerable populations and saving countless lives in the process. Finally, having a broad universal immunization plan would give pharmaceutical companies less room to haggle for inflated prices. So taxpayers' money wouldn't be used as much. If I had any comments, it would be that I wish this bill would be expanded to everyone, not just people under 18 and over 65. But I'd address, if not, I would like to see this expanded to those who are immunocompromised, so they would be better protected. If you need another way to justify this bill, take in mind that our society can only thrive if we lift each other up as well as ourselves. We all live on this island together. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Brent Koulas in opposition on Zoom.
Thank you, Chair Yomashita, Committee members. My name is Brett Koulas. I'm a 26-year Navy veteran. I live in Ever Beach. I strongly oppose SB 1434. Funding mechanism proposed by this bill is fiscally irresponsible. By levying assessments, AKA taxes, on health insurers, this will lead to increased costs for Hawaii families through higher insurance premiums. This regressive approach disproportionately burdens those already struggling with Hawaii's high-cost living. The bill also fails to include a spending cap or clear budget projections. This open-ended financial commitment will strain state resources and potentially divert funds from other critical health initiatives. Finally, the creation of another special fund for this bill violates sound fiscal policy and practices, and goes against the recommendation of 1989 Tax Review Commission, which stated such funds restrict budget flexibility and reduce accountability. Respectfully, I strongly encourage you to vote no on SB 1434. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have Cassandra Simonson in support on Zoom.
Hi there. My name is Dr. Cassandra Simonson. I'm a pediatrician in Maui. I've been here for 11 years, and I'm speaking on my own behalf. I work at the federally qualified health clinic. I stand on my written testimony, but I just wanted to point out that our unvaccinated Kakeke population has grown dramatically due to refusal and vaccine hesitancy. Only 36% of my two-year-old and below patients are fully vaccinated. And most often, they are refusing measles due to misinformation. And now we are in the midst of a very large measles outbreak. I expect it to be here any moment in our state. And so this is primarily a neighbor island vulnerability, because our because our immunization rates are so much lower. We have thousands and thousands of Kakee that are unimmunized on the outer islands, on the neighbor islands. So what you're going to see, if you want to come from the finance committee's perspective, air ambulance transport is thirty thousand dollars. Twenty percent of kids will need to be hospitalized. None of the neighbor islands have the capability to take care of very ill children. So you're looking at twenty percent of these thousands of unvaccinated Kakee that will need to be transported. The cost of one outbreak would be enormous to our state. And I just think that this very small investment, and we need it long-term. The federal government is not going to bail us out, like with COVID. This is a whole different administration. Our vaccines for children program is very vulnerable. And, you know, all of the pediatricians are extremely worried about how we're going to make this work and be planning for basically the worst-case scenario. So this was one way to try to mitigate that and to be prepared. I'm very concerned that we will just straight up run out of vaccines as well during an outbreak. So establishing our state fund that does not depend on the federal government would be a very good way to protect our Kakee. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Cheryl Toyo Fuku in opposition.
Aloha, representatives. My name is Cheryl Toyo Fuku. I'm a retired registered nurse. Over thirty years ago, I transitioned to more natural, non-toxic healthcare, and I'm in strong opposition of SB 1434. You know, this really raises major concerns on the administrative and financial burdens on assessed entities, as stated in the bill, trickling down to the people of Hawaii. And it also states that this is immunizations for all individuals. This bill has really transitioned from its original intent. It's morphed from this funding program to, again, include all individuals, not just those who are covered or not covered. So this is allowing the Department of Health to manage the purchase and distribution of immunizations without a projected budget and clear funding proposal. This is terrible fiscal policy. DOH's written testimony in support of companion bill HB 1115 dated February 7th for the House Health Committee stated, "Estimated annual administrative cost of a UIP," the universal immunization program, "is anticipated to be $2.8 to $3.6 million with a startup fee of $934,000." Then the latest DOH testimonial of SB 1434 for the recent House Health Committee dated March 14th omits this annual administrative cost, but it does say it still needs a one-time startup fee of $934,000. So this omission is a clear indication of fiscal irresponsibility. It is very apparent that this funding program will require a multitude of administrative tasks to manage the purchase, storage, distribution of vaccines to individuals in Hawaii with contracts to other entities to carry out the purposes of this funding program. Administrative tasks will also include establishment, monitoring, and responsibilities of this special fund with accurate records and reports and audits of fees, fines, cost reimbursements, legislative appropriations, grants, contracts, donations, and private contributions, monies from the federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services and other federal agencies. The authority given also to the Department of Health Director is really an overreach that may include experimental, unsafe, ineffective vaccines without any public or legislative oversight. Immunization, it says in the bill, "Immunization includes any other substance designated as such by order of the Director." So what other substances are we talking about? Is it more than what the CDC is recommending or the FDA? The Director may also determine an interim assessment for the new immunizations or public health emergencies, and shall calculate a supplemental interim assessment. These funds should actually be allocated instead to healthier programs. We're focusing so much on the vaccines, but it should be instead go to healthier programs and lifestyles that build natural immunity, not acquired immunity from these jabs. This would really truly benefit the people of Hawaii. Just, for example, healthier school lunches, exercise and sunshine, decreased technological screening that our kids are going through, and better health education from the Department of Health. Funding and focusing on any immunization program should be avoided as we are well aware of significant scientifically documented research linking toxic vaccines to neurological disorders, crippling diseases, and increasing chronic illnesses. The VERS Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System and the Vaccine Death Reports will verify and confirm this claim. So please, please oppose and do not let this pass this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Healy in opposition on Zoom.
Hi. I'm in opposition of this bill because I believe that it's not good for Hawaii citizens. At the end of the day, the hesitancy that's happening right now is not going to be changed by passing this bill. And I think that a lot of parents have the right to be hesitant when we have one in thirty-four children in the United States with autism, when we have skyrocketing rates of infertility death that's being reported to the VARS. And I understand measles is a very dangerous disease. But how exactly passing this bill and giving the power to the head of the Department of Health is going to change vaccine hesitancy in measles is not explained. Instead, really, all it's going to do is give power to a group of people who citizens no longer trust. And, you know, I just would like to quote Voltaire real quick because I think it's prevalent to this particular situation. Those that can make you believe absurdities can make you commit atrocities. And in the state of Hawaii, people are educating themselves on what they want to put into their body, what they don't want to put into their body. And I think all of you should vote no because this bill isn't going to change people's individual education. And I think it's a huge overreach. I think that, at the end of the day, we have the ability, by the way, like we did in COVID, to bring hospital ships to the islands. That's not an excuse for funding all of these vaccines. It's like a shill way, a shill tactic. And, you know, I might not be wearing a lab coat, but I can tell you right now that that's not going to change why her patients aren't taking the vaccines. So at the end of the day, you all should vote no on this bill. It doesn't make sense for Hawaii. It doesn't make fiscal sense. And make some more community outreach if you want to change the vaccine rates because right now seventy-seven percent of Americans don't trust the CDC for a reason. We're tired of having things put into our bodies that are killing people and killing children in particular. So thank you so much. I hope you all vote with your conscience.
Thank you. We have Kim Cordery in opposition. Oh. Maybe Kim Cordery on Zoom? Okay, well, we'll circle back at the end if anybody else is available. Teresa Ambroster in opposition.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. I'm Teresa Ambroster, and I'm strongly opposed to SB 1434 for several reasons. First of all, this universal program is not needed. There's already existing programs that allow access to vaccines for children and adults. So instead of having a universal program in people that want shots, and maybe they don't have as easy access like that other testifiers said on Maui or other islands, well, you can totally pare this way down, and you don't even need a universal program. You can have access to those people that want them on those islands. Just tailor-fit for the needs of the people on different islands as opposed to having a universal program and making all of us pay for a program that only some people need access to the shots. And also, since this is the finance committee, I do want to focus on some of the funding issues. First of all, like we were saying before, trying to take money from the general fund just to create a special fund is not sound fiscal policy. And also, taking a certain amount from other special funds just to support this fund, that can lead to fraud and abuse. And also, you need to clarify, there's on one of the pages that some other things are going to go into this special fund. It's from donations, private contributions, other monies from other sources. There needs to be a lot more transparency and clarity on that. And also, since this is a finance committee, Ken, we're asking you to be good stewards of our money. This program does not even list any... There's no spending caps. There's no clear budget, no cap on assessment fees and fines, no financial transparency, no fiduciary responsibility, all topped off with no liability to the Director of Health, his task force, or anyone involved in administering this program. This all adds up to a big no to a program that is not even needed. Instead of a one-size-fits-all vaccine program for all, why don't you spend less money and just initiate some programs that for overall health and resilience? And that would be less costly. It would be beneficial to everyone and would also support freedom of choice for all. So I do ask you again, since I just want to point back to another bill, that you're asking for $10 million for emergency appropriations. And if you can't even afford that, why are you going to start a whole new program with all these other issues, funding issues? So I strongly urge you to be good stewards of our taxpayer money and ask you to vote no to SB 1434. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have Yvette Moore in opposition on Zoom. Not present. We have Torita Teho Tui in opposition on Zoom.
Yes. Aloha, Maikako. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, mahalo. So Velina, my chair and committee members, I stand on my written testimony in opposition to SB 1434 SD1 HD1. In my last testimony that we did the other week, I had asked the committee, another committee, not you, to answer the questions that I had in my testimony. I am asking the same of this committee. The creation of the Universal Immunization Purchase Special Fund raises concerns about possible inefficiencies, lack of accountability, and added financial pressure on state and individual resources, as well as the religious exception. I'm going to add that in. Some key issues I want to highlight, so I have a number of points of questions. Because Hawaii already participates in the Vaccine for Children program, the USC 1396, which provides immunized patients at no charge for eligible children, eighteen years of age or younger, why do we need the UIP to cover children? That's number one. There are also similar terminologies that appear throughout the drafts of SB 1434. What do these terms entail, such as assessment, assessments, assessed entity, assessment rate, and interim assessment? And whom do they apply? What reports are these assessed entities required to submit? What specific information must be included in these reports? And what is the Department of Health's approach to executing these assessments? The frequent changes to the assessment mechanism. For instance, the provision allowing the Director to modify the assessments after just one year is very concerning to me. And it should be to you. What is the financial impact on entities? And what is the expected annual revenue from this initiative? Could you please specify which organizations or businesses are defined as assessed entity? And how does this differ from the definition in SB 1434? What does, lastly, what does HB 1434 SD1 HD1... Why does, not what does, why does HB 1434 SD1 HD1 broaden the universal immunization purchase program to cover all individuals' immunizations in the state? Not just those ineligible for no-cost programs? And could this increase the cost and duplication coverage for many in Hawaii? So mahalo for allowing me to testify and giving us time to share our manoa. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have Wallace James in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of committee. I'm opposed to SB 1434. First of all, it's a waste of taxpayers' money. Everybody knows that, just like the real. And the Department of Health asking for money, that's a red flag. So for me, I'm here to educate people right now. People don't know about the vaccines right now. Go on. So the other committee, I explained to them, go on Google it. Go on whatever search engine, look up VERS report, okay? The VERS is the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. And it shows everything from since 1990. It shows all the people that died, all the adverse events. And right here, I'll just give a little sample. I can go on days after days here. So reports of vaccine adverse events in VERS, 2,663,664. See, this is just the events, and that's under the government. So anybody who trusts the government, better look at this VERS report thing. Forty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-three total report deaths. Go look it up. Then everybody is saying, get vaccinated, get vaccinated. Well, go on the VERS report, see how much people died, see how much people got injured. So I've got some goodies for you guys. Like I said, I'm here to educate people. Anybody who don't believe that they can get injured, here's a video. You can go on eBay, Amazon, Vax One. Vax Two, People's Truth. There's also Vax Three, but I don't have Vax Three. Go watch the videos. Don't take my word for it. Do your investigation. Yeah, there's a lot of people that died and adverse events. But people, like I said, get vaxxed. The health department, they red flags. We should just get rid of the health department. They're not helping Hawaii. So here's another one. Calls unknown epidemic of sudden deaths, 2021 to 2022. Hundreds of people here, here. Eighteen-year-old girl died after first vaccine dose. I can go on and on. Why are we funding vaccines? That's the point. Why are we funding something that's going to kill children and human beings? You know why? I'll answer that question. Because people are getting money from Big Pharma. So somebody, a resource gave me who allegedly got money from Pfizer. Josh Green got a Whopper. He's got a lot from Big Pfizer. This is why all these vaccine bills come out every year, every year. We're coming out here, testimony. I'm leaving my job, spending money on gas money, not spending on gas money and parking. We're coming out here every year. Why is this vaccine bills keep coming out nonstop? Because people are getting paid. Representative Nadine Nakamura got a hundred dollars. Linda Ichimuro, two hundred fifty. Dee Morikawa, five hundred. Nikki Lauren, hundred. Della Abaladi, a thousand. Ronald Kuchi, a thousand. Glenn Wakai, one hundred. Donovan De La Cruz, eight hundred. Michelle Kadari, two hundred fifty. There's a lot more, but they're not in office right now. This is why the bills is going through, because people are getting money. We can just sit here, look at these books and videos, and say, look, people are dying. But the people turn away because, you know why? There's money being given. So this is not on you guys, but I'll just read this article. This was back in January 2024. 2024. Hawaii has been named the most corrupt state in America, okay? In recent evaluation conducted by Institute of Corruption Studies of Illinois State University Hawaii, known as Aloha State, has once again claimed the rather unwelcome title of the most corrupt city in the United States. And this is, this is civil beat back in 2016. Here's what, something you probably don't want to hear, Hawaii is the only state in which both legislative and executive branches are perceived to be very corrupt. The line comes directly from newly released results from the Corruption in America Survey of more than 250 reporters from across the country, many of whom cover state, government, and politics. So I think we should spend the money on investigating where the money is going to, how it's being spent, just like the Doge. We got to get into it. Look at the Department of Health, go and walk inside, they're probably just walking around getting money for nothing. They're a big red flag, and so that ends my testimony, and I'm against, and I oppose SB 1434. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ann Alamar Gomash, apart, sorry about that. Please go ahead, in opposition.
Hi, Alamar Gomash, thank you for having me. I'm opposed to 1434. I have lost in the past two years, six immediate family members from vaccine death, injury and death. I have two immediate siblings who have got chronic health conditions and long COVID, et cetera, from vaccines. I have nephews that were given MMR shots at age 14, or 18 months, that both became autistic within 72 hours, identical twins. It's impossible to say that that is not from the vaccine injected into their bodies. I have great concern about the fact that nobody's actually researching why there is so much hesitancy for vaccines in Hawaii. Like, maybe people know things that, that, like, it's affecting them on a personal level for a reason, they are actually stopping to do this to their children. I am personally vaccine-injured at age eight, and then again at 53, because I was unaware that the tetanus shot is a vaccine. I still deal with health conditions because of that injection. So the other problem is the fact that there doesn't seem to be any oversight on what's going to be spent, how much is going to be spent. It's kind of like setting us up for more waste use and fraud in Department of Health. The person who's going to be in control of these funds is not elected, they are appointed, and it doesn't seem to have like a lot of oversight of what they can do with these funds. So again, I'm just greatly opposed to forcing, or just spending any more money on things that we are very concerned about what the health effects are them, are on them. Go out and research the VAERS data, it's very specific what's going on. Go out and look and see what happened to our military when they were forced to get injected for this. Our pilots can't fly anymore, they've actually had to change the laws for people who fly, who are flying airplanes in the United States because of heart damage that they've got, myocarditis. My partner's sister was greatly affected from these, she has long COVID all the time. Anyway, that's just the COVID vaccines, let alone all the other childhood things. My son was damaged with a parapetousis vaccine at age two, so please do your research on this, please don't spend more money on this. Take that money that you would be doing this, and let's get people vitamin D3K2 every day. Let's give them things that actually promote their own immune system, which was God-given, to protect them from things that are in the environment all the time. Please, please, don't pass this bill, stop spending our tax money on things that people don't want. And again, I'm opposed to SB 1434. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark McArthur in opposition.
Hello, my name's Mark McArthur, and I'm opposed to SB 1434. As that nurse stated in her testimony, she said the vaccines or immunization is way down. She gave measles as an example. Back in the old days, they would have measles parties where they'd bring all the kids together, so all the neighborhood kids would all get measles and then naturally immunized. Why do we need all these vaccines? The most, healthiest kids in America are the Amish, they don't even get vaccinated. My mother lived at Kahala Nui, which is a real posh retirement home, and she lived, she got really sick, so she was, she was in the long-term healthcare, and she had a whole big group of friends, all super healthy, a lot of them still drove. Soon as they all got the vaccine, they all died within a year, like 10 of them. My mother got sick with COVID at one point, and I was in really strong contact with the doctor, and as soon as President Trump accepted the thing for monoclonal antibodies, my, the doctor called me, she said, your mom will be the first person that will be getting this, and it just cured her of COVID like that, something that other doctors weren't even pushing. So I feel like it's overreached for you to have, to put these funds out. I think that's about all I wanted to say today.
Thank you. That's everybody I had checked in. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Please come forward. Please just state your name and position for the record.
My name is Lois Young, I'm a private citizen, and thank you for the opportunity to speaking to you, speaking to you today, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the committee. I pride myself in being a very good steward of my money, and I'm sure that you do also. And whenever I buy a product, I look at the ingredients to see what's in it, and I'm sure you might do that also. I also take a look at a product, and I wonder, what are the side effects? And I do my research, like you do also. So as I look at this funding that's going forward for vaccines, I know that there have been injuries, there have been side effects, and I also know that pharmaceuticals are not response, the companies are not responsible for any injuries that occur, like myocarditis, death, paralysis, and it then falls on the guardian, or the parents, or the person who's been injured to handle all of those medical bills. That is egregious. I also feel that if, if there was an opportunity for them to sue the state, if they fund this, that might take place, if that's possible. But I also remember, as a child, like one fellow said, we had measles parties. I'm a senior, so we are exposed to our cousins, and when we had the measles, it was a lifelong immunity. I'm sure some of you here on the committee have been exposed to measles, and I'm still here, and so are my cousins, they're still here. So I do want to, I want to have us understand what herd immunity is, and that means you get exposed to the so-called disease, and you build up a lifelong immunity, period. You don't need one vaccine after another, after another, after another, which we know, or you may know, causes neurological problems, because there's ingredients in the vaccine that sits in your body, and where does it go? On your organs, on your brain, uterus, veins, where does it go? How is it eliminated? So we need to ask ourselves, are we buying a faulty product? So I just want to say, if we're going to spend our money, as I've heard before in this, in some of the testimonies, I really feel that if we can put our monies into educating our communities, our public, our schoolkids, on eating proper food, getting lots of Hawaii sunshine, and exercising, get involved in a sport, we can build our immune system up. So we don't have to take a pill, you know, medication on a daily basis. That, to me, is a program that keeps you on medication forever. High blood pressure, statins, all of these things, some of our seniors, we, we have them all the time. We're on continuous medication. Is there a cure? I believe there is a cure. Diet, exercise, nutrition. Let's do our research and educate our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom wishing to testify?
If I may.
Oh, please, just state your name and position for the record, and then proceed.
Aloha, I'm Austin Martin, I'm the Chairman of the Libertarian Party of Hawaii. I'm here today to oppose this bill and add a few comments to my written testimony by pointing out a few obvious, should be obvious things. Number one is that informed consent is really important. It's impossible to separate this bill from the greater context of a very aggressive and forceful push by the Hawaiian state to eliminate the health choices of individuals, to force them to obtain medicines that they do not want. This bypassing of informed consent is extremely harmful to our society in a number of ways. And I think this is actually the first issue, is that regardless of whether you think these other folks in the room are educated enough to have valid health opinions that you think should be binding on others, is absolutely irrelevant. They have a right to decide, for better or for worse. And we do not get to act like the potential presence of a disease is grounds for taking away their capacity as individuals. That would be number one. Number two is that there is a multi-billion-dollar lobbying industry which is active in this room right now with a massive profit incentive to take away such choice from the vaccine hesitant, and turn them into unwilling consumers, and all they have to do is buy enough votes. They, not long ago, convinced many of us that we needed to carry around vaccine passports in order to go eat at a restaurant. We are talking about oppression that really should turn our stomachs. So we cannot separate this bill from the context of what the state has been trying to do by force, by hook or by crook, nor can we separate it from the fact that these companies and their profit motive are hooked up with a multi-billion-dollar propaganda machine, and we are looking at the results of the politicization of medicine, where our bodies are the market that is being fought over without our consent. That's the problem today. Regardless of whether you agree with the vaccine salesman, and they are salesmen, and they do have a pitch, and they are absolutely influencing the political arrangement of this, to where everybody who disagrees with vaccine must automatically be a certain wing or a certain political perspective, and everybody who blindly believes everything the vaccine salesmen say with total credulity is a good other side. Most of us are just people who don't care about all that, we just don't want to be forced against our will to take medicines that we neither want nor need. I think it's really important that we look at this from both a fiscal perspective, this is just an irresponsible, terrible bill from the get-go, which just shows total disdain and disrespect for the people, our taxes, our economy, our society. But the trotting upon the individual rights, this is what Mussolini would call fascism. The father of fascism defined it as the merger between state and corporate power and interest. And here we are, doing exactly that. And it's from the people and the party that we would think least likely, or at least many would think least likely, to embrace such policy. This is the danger of excess certainty, the hubris of religious zealots who would impose their will on others because they are so sure they're right. Science is robust. There is no broad, total agreement. There is always exploration, new ideas, new questions, and when we take away those choices and the freedom of inquiry, the entire field suffers. And there are vaccine salesmen and pharmaceutical companies who want exactly that. They don't care about the science, and they don't care about public health, they care about their profit motive, and they're very eager to dress it up as if it were public health. But the truth is, public health is better served by freedom than by tyranny. Thank you for hearing me today. Have an excellent day.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, members.
Yes, finally. Bye.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is, well, first of all, thank you Chair Kyle Yamashita, Vice Chair Jenna Takegnochi, and members of the Finance Committee. I'm test, giving testimony to strongly oppose SB 1434 relating to Universal Immunization Funding Program. My name is Margaret Mahia, and I represent Hawaii Christian Coalition. Hawaii Christian Coalition has over 35,000 members, and we represent about 130,000 people, parents and their keiki in all districts, including the neighbor islands. And I'm just asking you today to vote no on SB 1434. First of all, it's not ethical to take federal funds from Medicare and federal and state funds from Medicaid to finance Governor Josh Green's, what I call his vaccination drive, in part, or in full, either way. Medicare funds are federal funds that are not designated for, that are designated for the elderly 65 years and older, and Medicare and Medicaid funds should not be raided and funneled into the Department of Health and/or the Department of Education for the purpose of vaccinating children and adults. A universal immunization program is not necessary since we already have vaccines for children, a federally funded program that provides free vaccines for eligible children in Hawaii. Second, just as the people spoke out against HB 1118, people should have a choice as to whether they want to be vaccinated or not. Parents should have a choice as to whether they want their children to be vaccinated or not. Over the years, even decades, Democrats said, my body, my choice regarding abortion rights. Now people are saying, my body, my choice regarding vaccinations. Suddenly, the Democrats are silent and no longer say, my body, my choice. But people should be able to decide what they want to put in their bodies. Vaccinations have ingredients like formaldehyde, polysorbate AD that causes cancer, fetal tissue cells, like the ones in all the COVID-19 vaccines, aluminum, mercury, animal blood, parts of animal organs, mRNA that changes a person's DNA, and many other harmful ingredients. People should be able to choose whether or not they want these ingredients in their bodies. Also, there are alternative ways people can boost their immunity, such as natural immunity, which many people talked about earlier. Instead of forcing them to get vaccinated, why not educate people on healthy ways to boost their immune system? Third, Governor Green wants to turn Hawaii schools into health clinics for vaccinations. If passed, SB 1434 would fund Governor Green's vaccination drive by providing a provider at Hawaii schools that gives vaccinations to children. This is gross negligence by the Department of Education and the Department of Health. It is not ethical, and there will be lawsuits galore. A child does not know the ingredients in these vaccines. A child does not know that it's more dangerous to receive vaccines in threes, such as MMR or DPT, versus a single dose. A child does not know that people can have adverse reactions to a vaccine, or even die from a vaccine. Where is the informed consent? Who will be liable in cases where vaccine injury or vaccine death occurs? I see lawsuits and lots of them if this bill were to pass. In addition, taxpayer money designated for education via the public school system would be used towards the public schools being used as a medical facility for vaccinations. Children go to school for education, not for vaccination. If parents want their children to be vaccinated, they can take them to a medical facility or a doctor. Also, taxpayers should not fund immunizations. Just as the Hyde Amendment protects our federal taxpayer dollars from funding abortions, we should not have to use our state or federal Medicare and Medicaid taxpayer dollars we should not have to use our state or federal Medicare and Medicaid taxpayer dollars to fund immunizations, since many people do not believe in immunizations. And since people have a choice as to whether they want to vaccinate or not. Although the Hawaii Department of Health gives an initial startup cost of this program, SB 1434 contains no spending cap and does not detail the ongoing cost of funding this program. Two point eight million to three point mil, to three million plus is probably about what we're looking at. And even though they say the additional, the initial cost is around nine hundred thousand. This bill gives the Department of Health way too much authority. Department of Health would be able to decide what substance, including mRNA, can be used in these vaccines. mRNA is a dangerous substance. And according to Dr. Robert Malone, MD MS, a biochemist and biologist and creator of mRNA technology, mRNA changes people's DNA. The people and not Department of Health should decide whether or not they want to be vaccinated. We find that SB 1434 is a campaign to vaccinate, hosting the medical treatments on publicly funded school campuses across the islands. These schools do not meet the standard of care required for children and adults, especially the children whom the public has entrusted in the Department of Education's care to educate and not to medicate. The Department of Education's trespass into the realm of medicine, medical treatment, medical device administration, faculties, and facility is unlawful, illegal, and dangerous. Schools should be prepared to be sued for lack of full informed transparency and destroying the quality of life to anyone who develops injuries, damages, and death as a result of vaccinations. Providers, as outlined in the bill, will be held personally accountable, responsible, liable for negligence, trespass, falsehood, complicit in coercive and propaganda tactics. Legislators can be held liable for breach of violation of oaths of office, including not upholding the United States Constitution and the Hawaii State Constitution. The Department of Education and the Department of Health can be held liable for no informed consent and for breaching student-physician care to, quote, "do no harm." Illegally and unlawfully interceding in the medical care of the student, exposing a tax-funded school campus to legal liability for conversion into a medical treatment facility, making it vulnerable to plausible lawsuits filed by any damaged and injured recipients of immunizations. So before, and I just wanted to add that, I read and heard several testimonies in support of this bill, and it sounds like some are trying to put fear into the people of Hawaii regarding a measles outbreak. A lot of people talked about the natural immunity. Proper amounts of vitamin A can also prevent measles. I come from a family of fifteen, and thirteen of us children all had measles. We had natural immunity to measles, and none of us died. So I think it's putting fear into the people of Hawaii. It's wrong. And we just ask you to vote no on SB 1434. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom?
Okay, members, we're going to move on to questions. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you, Representative Alcois.
I could have. Department of Health, question. Thank you, Ron. How many cases in Hawaii or children do you know of died from any of these outbreaks?
From any of the vaccine-preventable disease outbreaks?
Now, how many children died in the last year of 2024 or 2025 that you know of?
That I know of, I think for influenza itself, we've had, I think, two or three pediatric deaths from influenza unvaccinated individuals. For measles itself, from my recollection, we have not had any measles death, but we've had people that were hospitalized for measles, for severe symptoms. And for some other diseases, I'm trying to recall right off the top of my head. I don't have that information, right? But there are some other individuals that have died because of pertussis. Some children have died, I think, two in 2024, 2023. I don't know, I can't remember exactly. But there are, have been some deaths in children from vaccine-preventable diseases.
Do you have a data or report that you could show us when you come and we could see what's the increase or decrease later on, you know, in the future that we know what's happening in our state? You know, over the past four years or two years ago, this was not an issue. We didn't have this issue, and only now we having this issue. So why do you think we have this issue now?
As far as?
As we focusing on getting our kids, our families, all vaccines? And why do we need it now? What is your thing, why we need it?
So the actual program itself, the reason why we are requesting for this, a lot of it is because of the fact that our providers themselves, these are doctors' offices, usually one-man operation, maybe two, and a lot of them, neighbor islands, can't afford to purchase vaccines and then not have reimbursement for those purchases. And then a lot of them decide that they don't want those vac, or they don't want to purchase those vaccines because it's out of pocket. And they're not sure when they're going to get reimbursed for those out-of-pocket costs. The Department, or at least?
I think what I'm trying to say is like, last year, we, you know, everybody getting scared because of these measles and this outbreak and what's happening around the world, around the nation. And we're like, hey, we got to spend money and protect our kids and our families, you know? But yet you tell me that there was only like five people, on one hand, that maybe seriously got injured. But can you tell me that if we vaccinate all our children or all our kids, that none of them going to be ending up in a hospital? Can you give me a guarantee that these kids not going to face the same problems that the other kids that you just mentioned on?
So I can't give you 100% guarantee. There's no 100% guarantees. But what we do know is that vaccines are our best defense against diseases that could cause severe symptoms, hospitalization, and potential death. So in the absence of, and none of us want to be exposed to some of these diseases. We don't know each of our immune systems are, in a lot of ways, dependent on how it's going to respond to these diseases. And so individuals themselves, some individuals have maybe more robust immune systems that could potentially mount a really good response. Other people may have weakened immune systems that may not, and so may get more sick, hospitalized, or potential death. So I can't give you 100%. And there's no way that I can give you that. And I don't think there's anybody that can give you 100%.
Do you think that? I lost my question already, Chair, sorry. Our families? Hold on, I forget my question I was going to say. You know, we all want to protect our families here. We all want the safest thing for our children and someone around us. But I just feel that scared of our, I lost train of thought. Chair, cancel.
Okay, we can come back. If anybody else has any questions? Okay, we got to come back now.
Sorry, I got blanked all of a sudden. But thank you. And how much will it cost financially to run this program?
So right now?
Total, not just, you know, the overall picture?
So our request right now is for nine hundred and thirty-five thousand to start setting it up and getting it, and that's our request. The actual, once we get everything fully running, should, and again, depending on the funding sources. So we're looking at two funding sources at this point in time. One of them is going to be coming from the Vaccines for Children program. And then the second part is from the insurers. As was mentioned previously, talking about pharma and trying to take advantage and that they're in, I guess, support of lining pockets. Well, this actually minimizes that because insurance companies now are going to be able to purchase those higher costs at a lower rate so that pharma does not get the additional cost and that it provides savings for our people here and the providers that are actually going to be purchasing it. So in essence, we're looking at potentially around $2 million for operating administrative costs. And this is for the full gamut of, from birth all the way to 64 years of age. And that's to allow for us to be able to administratively operate, ensure vaccines are ordered appropriately, stored appropriately, monitored appropriately, and then provided and working with our insurance groups to be able to compensate appropriately. And so that's one of the costs of operating this actual program. We are looking at a potential ceiling, ceiling request that will come from reimbursements from the insurance companies of, right now, based on our not-so-great, but data that we're collecting on the number of individuals currently being vaccinated and also the number of people of uptake of vaccines, we're looking potentially at around 77 million as a ceiling. But that will actually most likely come down as we get, collect more data.
Out of the 77 million, is that taxpayer money?
That's specifically for?
How much, what the percentage would be taxpayer money?
So the VFC program would operate, majority of that percentage, so the two funding sources, first funding source is through the Vaccines for Children program. That's for those kids that are below nineteen years of age. Anybody that's under Medicaid that is eligible, I think there's around 20% of our population in the adult area that will be covered under that Medicaid area. The rest is all private insured individuals, and that will be coming from the insurance companies.
Oh, my other question, Basam, Chair. Why do we need this program already if we can go to the doctors and get our kids vaccinated? And why would we have to spend all these millions of dollars when we can just go to the hospital and get vaccinated?
Great question. You're lucky that you're able to go and do that. There's a lot of people that don't have access, can't have transportation, no access to medical care around the area, or like the providers currently right now that can't afford to pay for vaccines. So this program will allow for that reduced cost so we can distribute it out to more providers so that that way access is available so that those providers that don't have the opportunity, or the patients don't have the opportunity to get to those individuals can now afford to and go. And again, people are saying people are being forced to do this. This is for those that want to get the vaccine. Allow them access to it so that if it's readily available in the doctor's offices and they're there and they want it, they can get it. Now, if they want it and the doctor's office doesn't have it, then that's a difficult problem because they would have to most likely come back again, maybe not even come back at all. And so trying to find an opportunity to have people access and gain access to these vaccines are going to be really important, not only for our populated island here in Oahu, but for our neighbor islands that have difficulty in trying to access medical?
So in getting access for the medical vaccines, we want to try to set them up in our schools mostly?
No. So the schools actually, schools is another opportunity where, and this is actually, I don't know if some of you remember, our former program Stop Flu at School, where we annually provided flu vaccine. Now, everything is consented. Actually, even the schools themselves are, was it, voluntarily participating in our programs. And so in order for us to vaccinate any child, a parent would have to fill out a consent form and give us access. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions, members? Okay, okay, Representative Lamasal.
Do you have something else to say in regards to? Because he just cut you off, so I just wanted to allow you to finish.
Thank you. The, now my train of thought is lost, but?
It's safe, you don't.
But yeah, I mean, the opportunity to get vaccines and Stop Flu at School program is a really highlighted program that we have afforded, was at our community. And it started vaccinating our keiki, and we had some of the highest rates and lower reduction in disease outcomes, especially in that patient population. So again, the schools are not targeted. It's allowing access if they want it so that that way for parents that have to work and can't take off from work, they give consent forms and then can get vaccinated in the school setting with the appropriate consent forms and with individuals that are licensed to be able to vaccinate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Can you kind of give us an idea of what kinds of vaccines these would be?
So these vaccines are vaccines that have been approved through CDC and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. These are not anything outside of that. So FDA approved. And then after FDA approves it, then CDC will review the actual administration of the number of doses.
Okay, so I'm trying to get, this is like flu?
So this, this will be all?
Measles?
This will be all vaccines that are, that have been provided or recommended?
Bingles?
For adults, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's certain ages that can only receive that.
Okay, it's just not one kind of vaccine?
It's not one kind of vaccine, it's all vaccines.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, members? Okay, we're going to recess till 5:25, and then we're going to come back for decision-making. We're going to try to get a quorum. And then we'll move into our final agenda. Okay, recess. Okay, recess.
We're going to reconvene that could be on finance for our first two, uh, two o'clock agenda. First up is Senate Bill 1571 HD2, uh, SD2 HD2. Uh, okay, members, we're gonna, um, be amending this bill. Uh, the two, uh, prior committees have given prior concurrence on this. In fact, it's their amendment. Uh, they want us to change, uh, one part to make the CEO, um, of HDA to be appointed by the governor and advised and consented by the Senate. And then, uh, to facilitate this, we're gonna make additional, um, cleanup and technical language. Okay, any discussion? Okay, HD3.
SB 1571, SD2 HD2, recommendations to pass with amendments, chair and vice chair vote. Aye, Representative Grandinetti.
Aye.
Representative Holt.
Aye.
Representative Hasiya's excused, Representative Keo Hokapu Leloi. Representative Kitagawa.
Aye.
Representative Kush.
Aye.
Representative Lama Sau.
Aye.
Representative Lee.
Aye.
Representative Miyake. Representative Morikawa. Representative Templow.
Aye.
Representative Alcos.
Aye.
Representative Reyes Oda.
Aye.
And Representative Ward is excused, recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to Senate Bill 583, SD2 HD1. Recommendation is to pass as is, discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 583, SD2 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, noting the excused absences of Representatives Hasi and Ward who will be noted as excused for the remainder of this agenda unless otherwise noted. Are there any members voting with reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
No, no. Okay, hold on. Go ahead.
Oh, can I?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, uh, reservations for Representatives Grandinetti.
And me.
And Alcos. And no vote for Representative Reyes Oda.
Sorry, Chair, I missed it. Am I able to speak on this one?
I'm sorry?
Am I able to speak on this one?
Yeah, we're voting already.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You'll, you can speak during discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1491, SD1 HD1. Uh, recommendation is that we pass this one out as is, any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
SB 1491, SD1 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 742, SD2 HD1, as is, discussion? Vice chair.
SB 742, SD2 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 183, SD1 HD1, as is, discussion? Vice chair.
SB 183, SD1 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1359, HD1. Recommendation is that we, um, change the defective date to upon approval and technical amendments. Any discussion? Clean bill. Okay, vice chair for the vote.
SB 1359, HD1, recommend, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1360, SD1 HD1. Recommendation is also to, uh, move it to be upon approval and technical amendments. Clean bill, any discussion? Vice chair.
SB 1360, SD1 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, next, uh, Senate Bill 1361, HD1. Uh, recommendation is also to move this unamended, uh, upon approval, I'm sorry. Upon approval and technical amendments. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 1361, HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 935, SD2 HD2. Okay, members, we're going to be amending this bill. Um, this one, we're going to be adding back the provision, uh, that was in, uh, not the, in the Labor Committee, um, the pension calculations, uh, adding it back, um, the three, three percent, moving it to 1.75, 1.75 percent, um, but effective, uh, on, in 2031 after the next salary commission. Um, and then, um, adjusting the, uh, contribution rate also. And the language we'll read as follows, provide further that all judges who become a member after June 30th, 2031 shall contribute eight percent of their, uh, compensation, uh, compensa, uh, compensation to the annual savings fund, I'm sorry. And then also some technical amendment and some cleanup language, uh, technical cleanup language. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
SB 935, SD2 HD2, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Reservations for Rep. Alcos? Any other reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1567, SD1 HD1, as is, discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 1567, yeah, 1567, SD1 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 1065, SD2 HD1, as is, discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 1065, SD2 HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 447, HD1, as is, discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 447, HD1, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 479, SD1. Okay, we're going to be amending this bill, uh, re-defecting the effective date to 7/1/3000, blanking out the FTE and technical amendments. Any discussion? Vice chair.
SB 479, SD1, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 1281, SD2 HD1. We're gonna be, uh, defecting the date to 7/1/3000 and technical amendments, any discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB 1281, SD2 HD1, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1448, SD2 HD1. Okay, members, this is an emergency appropriation. I know everybody has concerns on this bill. Um, without, without this money, the, the hospital is not going to be able to operate. So we're gonna, uh, move the bill forward with the 10.66 So we're gonna move the bill forward with the ten point six six million dollars. Um, uh, we're gonna put the money back into the bill, ten point six six million. Um, and then ex, um, some cleanup language for, um, for the expenditure ceiling, because now we're, uh, with this appropriation, this is in the current year, so we're gonna affect the expenditure ceiling, so we're gonna have that language on there. It's gonna be upon approval and then some technical amendments to effectuate. Any discussion? Okay, HD two.
SB one four four eight, SD two HD one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Reservations for Rep. Alcos, any other reservations? Any no's? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill fourteen twenty-two, SD one HD one, as is discussion? Okay, vice chair.
SB one four two two, SD one HD one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Reservations for Rep. Alcos, any other reservations? Any no votes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill thirteen sixty-five HD one, as is discussion? Vice chair.
SB one three six five HD one, recommendation is to pass unamended, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill fourteen forty-three, SD one HD one. Uh, members, we're gonna move this out as is, this is upon approval and it is a clean bill. Any discussion? Okay. Vice chair for the vote. Your comment, please. Go ahead.
I'm gonna vote no on this bill, I know that, um, saving lives and protecting our families would be, very important, but I also feel that it's really affecting our kids as well, because it's a lot of, um.
Okay, I think you wanna, yeah, you want, okay. It's not the next one you wanna comment, okay. So this one is a clean bill itself, as is relating to the Department of Health, okay? Any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote, as it.
SB one four four three, SD one HD one, recommendations to pass unamended, any reservations? Any no votes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, um, okay, next bill is Senate fourteen forty-one, SD two HD one. Okay, this, uh, bill, we're going to, um, we're gonna make this bill a clean bill, we're gonna, uh, change the effective date to seven one twenty twenty-five and some technical amendments, this is the transfer. Any discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
SB one four four one, SD two HD one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any no votes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill fourteen thirty-one, SD one HD one. Uh, recommendation is that we blank out the FTE and technical amendments, discussion? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
SB one four three one, SD one HD one, recommendations to pass with amendments, any reservations? Any no's? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill, Senate Bill fourteen thirty-four, SD one HD one. Uh, recommendation is we pass this one out as is discussion. Representative Reyes Oda.
Thank you. The intention of this bill is to decrease barriers to accessing immunizations in order to improve public health. While I don't disagree with that fundamental principle, there's more to this bill with broader implications that negatively impact the state. First, this is a prime example of government overreach that will mandate insurers, health plans, and small businesses to contribute to funding this program, compromising healthcare decisions that should remain autonomous. Second, this could present undue hardship to families and businesses, removing flexibility in the private market, where premium increases may be passed on to consumers disproportionately affecting those of low income. Finally, I'm concerned about creating a special fund to administer the program, which skips the legislative process like coming to this committee for appropriations. For these reasons, I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you very much, further discussion? Okay, thank you, vice chair for the vote.
SB one four three four, SD one HD one, recommendations to pass unamended, noting the no vote of Representative Reyes Oda, any other no's?
No vote.
No vote for Rep. Alcos, any other no votes? Any reservations? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members, we are adjourned, we're gonna move into the next agenda. Okay, uh, we're gonna convene, convene on finance for our second agenda, little behind. Uh, first up is Senate Bill eighty-eight, vice chair.
Okay, uh, first up, we have the Hawaii National Guard in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, I'm Brigadier General Ross, Director of Joint Staff, here on behalf of the Hawaii National Guard and Major General Logan, our Adjutant General for State of Hawaii. Uh, we stand in strong support of SB eighty-eight, I'm here for any questions that you or any one of the committee members may have, sir.
Okay, thank you, we'll take questions at the end, thank you.
Next, we have the Department of Defense in support. Major General Logan. Oh, okay. Oh, sorry.
Yes, I'm Brigadier General Ross, I'm on behalf of Major General Logan in support of this Senate Bill eighty-eight.
Thank you. Uh, we also. Also, a testimony in support from Shelby Pikachu Billionaire.
Aloha mai kako, Pikachu ko inoa, no makalia mai ao, no ho ao ai, wai nei, mahalo nui loa. Uh, before I became Pikachu, I was actually United States Air Force in the year two thousand. I used to work at J six Indo-Pacific Command, before it was Indo-Pacific Command, it was just Pacific Command. And when they never gave us this dental program, I know what the bill says, but I definitely support this bill for all enlisted, all personnel, because I wish they'd fixed my teeth as a kid, but they never did. So I definitely support this bill with tri care, extra care, whatever kind of care. If they're gonna pay for it, heck yeah, finance it so we can go home, go early. Mahalo nui loa, chiu!
Thank you. Uh, we also, that's everybody who, um, said that they might be here today, we also have testimony in support from one other individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Question, members. Okay, thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill two two four, SD one HD one.
Uh, we have the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation in support. Okay, uh, Community Alliance on Prisons in support.
Good evening, committee. Thank you for hanging in there. Um, we're in Community Alliance on Prisons, I'm Kat Brady, the coordinator of Community Alliance on Prisons, and we're in strong support of this, this measure. You know, since twenty twenty-two, ten thousand five hundred eighty people have been released from jail or prison. Of that number, only a hundred fifty have received IDs. And of the hundred fifty, only thirty-two didn't have to pay. So, um, the legislature allocated money to the department to further the IDs and they spent one thousand two hundred eighty dollars on the IDs and basically almost sixty thousand on overhead. We're concerned about this because when people exit incarceration with nothing, no ID, no money, what do we think is gonna happen? If they have no families, they're gonna go back to what they know just to survive. So ID is really, really crucial, and I hope that you support this bill, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Domo konnichiwa, Pikachu to moshi masu, yoroshiku naeshimasu, hajimashite yoroshiku. So I support this bill because we have a lot of people in jail who are Hawaiian. And when they get out, they know more ID, they end up at Polkai Bay, but they get robbed within their first week, so they can't get ID. So that's why people from jail actually call, we got mono from God Forgives Bad Boys to Bad Girls, they have like eight thousand people on Facebook strong. But those people come out of jail, they end up going back to the streets because they can't get ID, you can't get a job, cannot go, even seven eleven, they're having a hard time because you cannot buy alcohol, which is a good thing. But we wanna use whatever we can to help the people who wanna be poor and old, to rehabilitate themselves, to become a better person. And this will help them to do that, because if that, they don't even have money, they don't even have cash, when you get out of jail or prison, you're just stuck. And so with this bill, if you guys can finance it, charge the military or somebody else, or Donald Trump, um, so we can not take it up for general funds, thank you very much, aloha.
Thank you. That's everybody who indicated that they were present today, we also have testimony in support from the Office of the Public Defender, Office of Hawaiian Affairs, comments from the Department of Human Services, um, support from one organization and four individuals. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Questions, members? Thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill two two three, SD two HD one.
Uh, first up, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, as members of the committee, my name is Michael Walker, I serve as the statewide fire protection forester for DLNR, Division of Forestry and Wildlife. The department has provided testimony in support of the measure and provides comments. Part one affirms the Division of Foresting and Wildlife's mission to suppress and prevent wildfires on the division's lands. And historically, uh, prior to the fiscal year twenty-five, the department was significantly underfunded for this mission. The funding in fiscal year twenty-five increased our budget to around eighteen eight million, which is around thirteen and a half dollars per citizen, uh, in regards to suppression. In order to create an independent wildland fire program, it would be a significant increase to the budget. And I provided some figures, uh, providing, uh, the budget for California's wildfire suppression program, which is around a hundred and five dollars per person, per capita, which is around four billion dollars for them, it would be maybe a hundred and fifty million for the state of Hawaii. In regards to part three of the bill, um, the House Draft One added some language to Chapter one eighty-five to allow for DOFA to conduct hazardous fuel reductions on state lands that are not under the division's purview. Uh, the department does have some concerns about the liability that, uh, this may cause to the department. And also, that would also involve an, in significant increase in funding and personnel, uh, for this program. Uh, I did highlight that there is a program that we're using our fiscal year twenty-five operating funds to support hazardous fuel reductions on community lands that are adjacent to the division's forest reserves and other holdings. And, um, it's, it's an alternative to a program, it's, uh, it's giving funds to the communities, through the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization. And, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, maybe potentially expanding that program in the future, and we'd appreciate your support. Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. We have Life of the Land with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. Lifeland is very active in monitoring fire, wildfire mitigations. We're the one intervener in the PUC proceeding reviewing Hiko's wildfire mitigation plan. We also have concern with the provision of going on to non-DLR land. And if that is done, it should be, it should be, the bill should be modified to say that you need the landowner's permission and of course, you're following other rules, mahalo.
Thank you. Um, Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Aloha, anihaseyo, kamsamida, mana so, pangasumida, Pikachu mida. Good to see you guys all again, I support this bill because we're in Wainai, Nanakuli, or Sumatul, Lahaina. And what happened is if you look at the old maps versus the new maps, a lot of the fire breaks that you guys installed back in ancestor days, they got removed and a lot of things burned down. So we got crazy hobos that'll just go on their motorbikes, put diesel, and go run the fires. So whatever kind of bills, you're right, that's probably not gonna work. However, we can do the fire mitigation, we can do, start doing some PSAs again. I grew up on Smokey the Bear, Only You Can Prevent Forest Fires, he used to have this sparky little color book. We just had the town hall with them, I didn't see no Sparky, I didn't see no Smokey the Bear, or some other puppy dog on a little color book, and I had colored the lines before, so I definitely, uh, wanna support this for all the neighbor islands, because this is a statewide bill, and I trust you guys to figure out the financing for it, because the Wainai people just get a weed whack and we'd weed whack it ourselves, just finance the gas, it will take care of the rest. Thank you very much, aloha.
Thank you. That's everybody who, um, I have signed in, also testimony in support from the Department of Education, testimony in support from one, um, other organization, comments, oh, comments from the Honolulu Fire Department, and one individual in support and one with comments. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions? Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill four sixty-five, SD one HD one.
Uh, do we have Department of Land and Natural Resources? Uh, they weren't checked in, um, providing comments and also Councilmember Boluson from the Kauai County Council in support. Uh, anybody else wishing to testify? In the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you, nobody to question, so we'll move on to the next bill, Senate Bill seven thirty-nine, SD two HD one.
Uh, first, we have Department of Land and Natural Resources providing comments. Uh, Agribusiness Development Corporation in support. Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Brian Maimola, here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau, will stand on a written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's everybody who's been checked in, also testimony in support from Hawaii Farmers Union and one individual. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Thank you, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill one twenty-five, SD two HD one.
Uh, first up, we have DBED in support. Thank you. Next, we have Agribusiness Development Corporation in support. Okay, thank you. Department of Taxation with comments. Thank you. Hawaii Food Industry Association in support on Zoom? Not present. Uh, do we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments on, not, not present? Okay, uh. Uh, Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Present. Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on a written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's everybody, um, who's been checked in, also seven other individuals in, or seven other organizations in support and two individuals.
Have our testimony, Josh Wish for Holamula, collaborative in support, uh, so we'll largely stand on our testimony. The one thing I'll just briefly underscore is that one of the things that this does that would be so helpful is that because of when this was created, it was focused on manufacturers who sold at wholesale. And so under the current enterprise zone program, you have to miss, the manufacturers have to sell the majority of their goods at wholesale to participate, which leaves out basically much of the modern economy, where local manufacturers sell directly to retail. So this would allow those manufacturers of tangible projects who sell directly to retail to participate. Thank you very much, we're here for any questions you've got.
Thank you.
And thanks for sticking around for a long day.
Thank you, anybody else in the room? Anybody on? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? And we have your testimony. Okay, we'll move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1641, S.D. 2, H.D. 1.
Department of the Attorney General in opposition.
Good evening. Kevin Tong, Deputy Attorney General. We oppose this bill as currently drafted. We have concerns that Section 201(c) of this bill does not contain legally sufficient standards for grants of public monies as required by the Constitution. And we included draft standards attached to our testimony. We also have concerns that the new Section 201(g) does not meet the requirements to establish a special fund. So we strongly recommend adding a purpose section to explain how this fund meets the requirements of Section 37-52.3. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We have D-Bed, the Seaford Creative Industries with comments.
Hi, Georgia Skinner, Creative Industries for D-Bed.
Thank you. Do we have Pride and Work Hawaii in support on Zoom? Not present. ITSC 665 in support. Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Aloha, Mike Akko. Pikachu back again. Chairman of the Ohana United Party and King of the Hawaiian Islands. So going through the bill, I ran it through AI. It did give me warnings since we're in the Finance Committee about how you're going to audit the process, how you're going to have accountability. Because we can do our own movies and films. You've seen Antion Aurelius do his pictures earlier for Prince Kohio Day, but we don't have a budget to compete with Netflix. We can do infrastructure like in Campbell Industrial Park. We can start bringing the money here and not paying the royalties and other commercial industries if we can figure stuff out together. But I am concerned, like the deputy AG said, about the clauses. If we can't get that or the finances through them, so I'd definitely recommend putting amendments through before it has to cross over, go to the House, and do something crazy like kill the bill and waste your time after doing this again. So thank you very much. I trust you guys' insight. Mahalo nuelo.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody I have signed in. Also, testimony in support from Hawaii State AFL-CIO and the Kapalee Chamber of Commerce, Maui Chamber of Commerce with comments, as well as six individuals in support, two individuals in opposition, and two others with comments. Anybody else wishing to testify? Please state your name and position for the record.
Angela Melody Young, testifying to provide comments. So I believe in the goal of the bill, and yet perhaps it's not achievable because of what the Attorney General has said. So if it's possible, so I actually do have workforce development experience in Los Angeles, Hollywood, of working on set of the productions for the Oscars and for the Grammys, live red carpet events, working with actresses and the entire production team and production crew. So I think the best way is to look at California's code, which is the California government code for the California Film Commission, to then replicate the statutory structure of the commission in that jurisdiction to get to common goals of economic development with filmmaking as a major driver for enhancing the economy. And so I'm not entirely sure, though, what the workflow process is, if you have to actually ask California to use their code. Yeah, I think it's a good idea to copy in a ready, workable format instead of inventing something. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? Okay. Okay, we're going to try and speed this up a little bit as much as possible. If you don't have something substantial to say, can you stand on your testimony? Some of the members are going to have to catch flights. And if we lose them, we're going to lose quorum, and then we don't vote. Okay, so the next bill is Senate Bill 1547, S.D. 1, H.D. 1.
We have the Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. The Libertarian Party of Hawaii in opposition. Not present. Alun Farms in support on Zoom? Not present. And Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
In support.
Thank you. That's everybody who indicated they might be present. Also, comments from Department of Budget and Finance, support from Ulu Pono Initiative, and five individuals in opposition. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 865, S.D. 1, H.D. 1.
First up, we have the Department of Agriculture in support. Thank you. University of Hawaii System in support. Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's everyone who is signed in. Also, 15 other organizations, all in support, as well as about 30 individuals. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions, members? Okay, moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 693, S.D. 1, H.D. 1.
Department of Agriculture in support. Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Ohana United Party stands in support. We have one comment, is that when there's a tsunami zone for these things, they have to go above the flood zone, like not in Kualua.
Thank you. That is everybody I have checked in. Also, testimony in support from the County of Hawaii Department of Research and Development, eight other organizations, and 37 individuals, all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, members, question? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 1304, S.D. 2, H.D. 1.
Department of Agriculture in support. University of Hawaii System in support. Thank you. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. That's everybody checked in. Also, testimony in support from Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Mayor Bisson from the County of Maui, two organizations and one individual in support, and one other organization providing comments. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, questions, members? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 763, S.D. 2, H.D. 2.
Department of Agriculture in support. Thank you. Agribusiness Development Corporation in support. Thank you. Department of Law Enforcement in support. Thank you. Do we have Hawaii Cattlemen's Council in support on Zoom? Not present. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
And Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Master Jedi Billionaire approves in support.
Thank you. That's everybody checked in. Also, testimony with comments from Department of Budget and Finance, support from County of Hawaii Office of Prosecuting Attorney, as well as six other organizations and 11 individuals. Everyone in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom?
Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, last bill, Senate Bill 1249, S.D. 1, H.D. 2.
Department of Agriculture in support. Thank you. Department of the Attorney General with comments on Zoom. Not present. Hawaii Cattlemen's Council in support on Zoom. Not present. Hawaii Farm Bureau in support.
Hawaii Farm Bureau stands on its written testimony in support.
Thank you. Shelby Pikachu Billionaire in support.
Yes, we support this bill. I would like to make one amendment because the fines are too low, in my professional opinion, for criminals who are going to rob people, such as Duke P. his mom here, and took Duke's life. So I would definitely like to ask you guys to please increase the fines to deter future criminals from ever doing this again.
Thank you. We have Austin Salsito in support.
Full support, Chair. This is what we've suffered. This is graphic. I don't want to spoil your appetite. But I'm Austin Salsito. I approve this message.
Thank you. We have Gina Calais Salsito in support.
Standing on my written testimony and am strongly in support. And I ask you folks, this is my nephew. Please, don't let it burn upon bright eyes and deaf ears. Please, pass this, lend him memory, live on. You cannot be replacing life. Life is priceless. All you have is the inner spirit and the love, unconditional love you have that you share with them. And I ask you, if you pass this, please, act as if it was yesterday. You've been pleading enough. Please. Nephew, memories. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have Raquel Achu in support on Zoom. Not present. That's everybody checked in. Also, comments from the Department of Budget and Finance, opposition from the Office of the Public Defender, three organizations in support, and 11 individuals, all in support. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anybody on Zoom? Okay, circle back to the Department of Attorney General with comments.
I'm so sorry. Deputy Attorney General Tricia Nakamoto, appearing on behalf of the department. I apologize for being late and on Zoom. We are available for questions, if any. We are in support of the bill, but ask that certain parts be deleted as we don't feel that it's consistent with the bill's purpose to strengthen penalties. And our testimony goes into that in detail, our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room or on Zoom wishing to testify?
Okay, members, questions? Okay, we're going to take a very short recess. We got one member on his way. Okay, we're going to reconvene the Committee on Finance for decision-making. First up is Senate Bill 88. Recommendation is that we defect the date to 7/1/3,000, and some technical amendments. Any discussion, members? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
SB 88. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Grandinetti. Representative Holt. Representative Hasi is excused. Representative Keo Hokapu Leloi. Representative Kisegawa. Representative Kush. Representative Lamisau. Representative Lee. Representative Miyake. Representative Morikawa. Representative Templow. Representative Alcos. Representative Reyesoda. And Representative Ward is excused. Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 224, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 224, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended, noting the excused absences of Representatives Hasi and Ward, who will be noted absent for the remainder of the agenda unless otherwise noted. Any members voting reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 223, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Okay, Vice Chair?
SB 223, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 465, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 465, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 739, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 739, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving to the next bill, Senate Bill 125, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 125, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving to 16, Senate Bill 1641, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. We're going to be blanking out the FDE and some technical amendments. Discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 1641, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, that one, members, the AG had some concerns. I should have said this before. But AG had some concerns. I'm going to have the subject matter committees deal with that in conference, so. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next bill, Senate Bill 1547, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendation is to pass as is. Discussion. Okay, Vice Chair?
SB 1547, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 865, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. We're going to be blanking out the FDE and technical amendments. Discussion? Okay, Vice Chair?
SB 865, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 693, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 693, S.D. 1, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on, Senate Bill 1304, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. As is, discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 1304, S.D. 2, H.D. 1. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, moving on to the next bill, Senate Bill 763, S.D. 3, S.D. 2, H.D. 2. Moving on, we're going to be blanking out the FDE and some technical amendments. Any discussion? Vice Chair?
SB 763, S.D. 2, H.D. 2. Recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the final bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 1249, S.D. 1, H.D. 2. Recommendation is we're going to be passing this out as is. The prosecutor's concerns, again, we're going to have the subject matter committees deal with that in conference. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair for the vote.
SB 1249, S.D. 1, H.D. 2. Recommendations to pass unamended. Any reservations? Any noes? Recommendations adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We have adjourned.